Good evening and welcome to the NORAD School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, February 10th, 2021. First order of business is approval of minutes. We do have in our packets minutes from our business meeting on January 27th, as well as executive session minutes from the same night. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Biggie and Marie, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, 5-0. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, then moving right along to warrants. Dave, Tanya, could you please give us your warrant report?
Yep, I signed warrants in amounts of $1,708.72, $88,824.56, $1,828.75, $42.60, $8,402.70, for a grand total of $897,982.42.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any questions on the warrants from the committee? All right, moving right along to public forum. As a reminder to the community, if you would like to access public forum, you can do so by emailing us at MPSchoolcommittee@norad.k12 MA.us. Tonight, we do have two emails that came in. The first one was sent to us on January 30th, and this comes from Ms. Toni Esco. And Ms. Esco writes, "Hello Superintendent Dr. Thompson and School Committee Members. My name is Toni Esco. I am a town meeting member for District 5 and a past school committee member having served seven years from 2001 to 2008. I was on the school committee when we originally leased the middle school in Norwood classrooms, which at the time we said was only temporary. Fast forward 20 years, and now there is thankfully so much discussion surrounding the plans to build a new middle school facility. I appreciate the tremendous amount of work and effort you are all putting into that endeavor. At this time, I write to you as a member of the NORAD Historical Commission. I am also the Commission's representative member of NORAD's Community Preservation Committee. I take this opportunity to share some information regarding the Coakley Middle School's next-door neighbor, the George H. Morse House Museum and Education Center. As there will continue to be a need for many discussions and meetings regarding the proposed new middle school, I thought it would be beneficial for you to know more about the historical resource that is literally a few steps from the Coakley parking lot. Please try to find a few minutes in your busy schedule to read the two attachments." And just so the school committee knows, the attachments are in our packet for your review. "I hope you will find them interesting from an educational and local history point of view. The Community Preservation Committee has accepted the Historical Commission's project proposal for a 50,000 master plan and feasibility study for the Morse House." Again, she wrote this to us on January 30th, and at the time she mentioned that it was supposed to be on the town warrant for the coming week, February 4th Town Meeting. The details are in the attached presentations. "I hope that you will incorporate this knowledge about the Morse House, Morse Family, and the site as we continue to formulate more concrete building plans for the future of the Coakley Middle School and its surrounding property. The Morse House and its family history is a great local educational resource for our middle school age students, as well as for all the citizens of Norwood, past, present, and future. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on this topic. Regards, Toni Esco." That was the first email that we received from public forum. And then we did receive an email earlier today. This one is titled "School Reopening Plan", and it comes to us from Michelle Shu. Ms. Shu writes, "Hello, can you please advise whether or not we will be addressing a reopening plan anytime soon? As teachers are nearing their turn in the vaccination queue, many are wondering how and when we will allow students to begin to return to the classrooms. I would imagine this would take much advanced planning and deliberation, and I haven't seen that this is occurring. So many students are struggling academically and also in terms of mental health. It would be really helpful to begin seeing the light at the end of the tunnel and to know what NORAD's plan is, especially as we see many nearby towns working to increase their own classroom time. Thank you, Michelle Shu." So at this time, those are the two emails that we received from public forum. So we do declare public forum closed now at 7:07. As always, we don't discuss over public forum emails, but in the event that Ms. Shu is currently watching, I just want her to know that Dr. Thompson will be hitting on some of her questions in his superintendent report. So now we are moving along to appearances. And our first appearance of the evening is Ms. Aubrey Sneal, Mr. Ryan Quigley, and Ms. Lori Semino. They are here to discuss with us the Metro West Behavioral Health Survey. Good evening. Just on a technical question, do you want us to run the PowerPoint, or do you want to run it from your end? You could either run it, or Dr. Thompson could pull it up. Okay, we can run it from our end. Okay.
Because I don't have it.
It's okay, I can do it, I think. I think. I say that now, and, yeah, one second. Do you want me to send it to Dr. Thompson? I didn't see Ms. Semino let you send it to me before.
That's okay, I have it right now.
Okay, perfect.
Just verbally let me know because I'll lose seeing you all as soon as I start presenting.
You can see it.
Okay, great. I'm going to give a sneak preview. Okay, here we go. So, good evening. This evening, we're going to be presenting to you a little bit of an overview on the 2018 Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. I am going to turn this over to my colleagues to get a little bit of the background, and then we'll get into a little bit of the meat of what the survey is.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you tonight. Very quickly, just want to give you some background. So the purpose of the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey is to monitor attitudes, behaviors, and beliefs around a variety of topics that Ryan will get into in a moment. An iteration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey has been implemented in Norwood since about 2005. In 2015, Impact Norwood was able to pay for the administration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey due to a large donation from Norwood Hospital. So I wanted to point that out because we're grateful for that. And then in 2018, through the Drug-Free Communities Grant, Impact Norwood helped to fund the majority of the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, which is a regional version of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The 2021 administration will be happening this coming October, and again, that will be funded in collaboration with Impact Norwood and Norwood Public Schools. And I want to highlight that this is an incredibly important tool, not just to help maintain our grant funding and to get future grants, but it also helps to inform the district in strategic planning and to evaluate district and town-wide initiatives aimed at supporting youth in Norwood. And we can go to the next slide. Like I said, we'll be implementing the 2021 survey this coming fall to grades 6 through 12, so Coakley and Norwood High School students. And then we typically receive the results the following spring, so we should have those by spring 2022. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you very much, Aubrey, and it's nice to see everybody. Specifically, the topics that the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey covers are the following: substance use, violence, behaviors related to unintentional injury, mental health, sexual behaviors, online behaviors, some additional behaviors such as physical activity and nutrition, and then protective factors, which we'll touch upon a little bit in one of our next slides. Next slide. Just as a somewhat of a disclaimer, we're calling this. It's important, I think, for the committee, you know, as well as the community at large, to point out that this data is from 2018. We received it in 2019. I think we're all well aware that a number of factors along the way have prevented us, as a group, as a district, you know, of really doing a thorough dive into the data and presenting this data to you sooner, at an earlier date. But Impact Norwood, the district, have still used this data to inform a lot of new programs and new ongoing initiatives. You know, as mentioned, we aim to implement the survey every two years. But due to the pandemic, the unfortunate reality is the Metro West Adolescent Survey has been postponed with, as Aubrey had mentioned, the new administration date of, target date of October 2021. Another unfortunate reality is we do anticipate the numbers changing largely, in part due to the pandemic, especially the numbers, you know, around mental health of our students. Next slide. And how the data applies to our work as a district, as educators, as parents, as different people in the community who support the health and well-being and the safety of our students. The survey data provides key points, data points, specific to the health trends and behaviors of our students. The data provided by the survey oftentimes, especially recently, is really driving the development of curriculum, some new programs and curriculum design for all departments, not just the wellness department, but all of our department. And that curriculum development is really going beyond just sort of the core academic subject areas: social, emotional wellness, physical health, mental health, things of that nature. And as Aubrey mentioned earlier, the Metro West Survey is extremely important to help inform the district in terms of its strategic planning and to evaluate our district in sort of town-wide initiatives aimed at supporting all of our youth. And I will now turn it back over to Aubrey.
All right. So we just wanted to give you a brief snapshot of some of the things that the survey data gives us. So some concerns that we're seeing for substance use trends. Since about 2015 in middle school, unfortunately, we've seen a very slight increase in use of substances. So for example, alcohol went from about 3% using in 2015 to about 5% in 2018. Marijuana, 2% to 3%. And then you see that big jump in electronic vapor product use from 2015 to 2018. Unfortunately, we don't have data before that because I don't think it was really quite as big prior to 2015. So that went from about 5% to 13% in middle school. Another concerning point, again, in high schools around electronic vapor use, that went from about 23% to 31%. And as Ryan mentioned, we're a little concerned that because of the pandemic, we might see these numbers increase. Hopefully, not too much, but there might be a slight increase as a result of the pandemic. And now that I've gone through the doom and gloom, I think it's important to highlight the hope that we have. So in high school, we are seeing a decrease in alcohol, marijuana, and cigarette use. And then given local and now state policies in place around electronic vapor products and other flavored tobacco, I think we can be cautiously optimistic that reduced access to these products will show a decrease in use after the next survey implementation this coming October. So hopefully, we'll see that number go down. And now I'm going to turn it over to Lori to talk about mental health.
Great, thank you. So taking a look at the mental health, we're able to break down. One of the things I also want to just share with you all is we've tried to, in this presentation, share with you the different ways that data is presented to us. So as you saw with Aubrey and the substance abuse, you got to see data presented in sort of a linear fashion. This way, we're able to see it as sort of a bar chart that shows us Norwood's data in comparison to Metro West data. In the next chart that I will share with you, you'll also be able to see data in comparison to gender. So there are many ways that the data paired with us through the survey. So each of these areas that we look at is broken down to us, both on a comparison of Metro West, comparison of ourselves within Norwood, and then a comparison by gender. So we're really able to dig deep into each of these areas that is a value, that is questioned and taken a look at. So getting into mental health, breaking it down at the middle school level, you'll see that, you know, 20% of our students had reported in 2018 that life had been very stressful within the last, I believe it was, 30 days. And that when you break down that into what are the issues at hand, they report that school issues are really the thing that are driving life being most stressful. So taking a look at how it is, this helps us as a district take a look at what it is that is happening within our schools and how we can go about supporting students better within our schools. As you are all aware, we were able to invest with the support of the town through the override with adding school adjustment counselors in our schools, which has made a huge difference in supporting students in the moment, in the days, during their day in school, at the elementary level, and as well as now having them at the middle and high school, which has made a big difference. Moving on to the high school, we take a look at it as well and see that, again, it's reported that life has been very stressful in the last 30 days at about 50% for our high school students. School issues again being the primary reason. But one of the things that I want to point out for both middle school, I'm going to take a step back to look at the middle school, and again, at the high school, is that our females are significantly more stressed than our males. So that again allows us to take a look at what is going on in the lives of our females that is causing their lives to be significantly more stressful than our males. What are those things that we can put into place to help support our females within the educational environment? As well as it allows us to look at social issues, family issues, safety issues, appearance, physical, emotional. Does all of these things impact a student when they walk through our doors and their ability to access the academic program that we are presenting them? If our students are not available to learn, then anything that we are presenting them academically is sort of secondary to them being available to learn. So one of the things that we are happy to see is that at the middle school, these numbers are still relatively low. One thing that's concerning and important for us to watch is that they do jump a little bit more at the high school. This is certainly something that Dr. Gallagher and I have been discussing and drive some of the work that we're doing around looking at mental health and mental health supports at the high school. But we absolutely anticipate this to be an area that is going to take significantly more role, take a significantly bigger role in looking at the 2021 data after the pandemic. So I'll turn it back over to Ryan.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting, Lori was mentioning, you know, in a previous slide, you know, how so different sources of stress, at least according to the 2018 survey, indicated that females are feeling more stressed than males. And interestingly enough, if you look at this particular slide, or this is looking at the school connectedness amongst grade students in grades 6 through 8, you see, in fact, that male students do have a greater sense of connectedness with their, with their school, with people at school, you know, with teachers at school, and just their overall safety and wellness. So I think those two, those two data points, those sets of data definitely go hand in hand. And again, this idea of school connectedness would fall under the category of protective factors. And I think, no matter what your role is, you know, within the Norwood Public Schools, whether it be educator, whether it be administrator, parent, the support staff, I think this, this slide and the slide that follows really highlights what we're all about, right? That family, that school-home partnership, making sure that students absolutely have those strong relationships with the adults in their lives that they're spending, you know, roughly six, seven, maybe eight hours a day with. You know, it just shows how important and how valuable these relationships are for students and that feeling of school connectedness. So if we could just go on to the high school, school connectedness, you see here again, male students continuing to feel more connected with, with their school, with their experience, their friends at school, their teachers, how happy they are, and how safe they feel. You know, I think sort of at face value, both of these slides, you know, male or female, positive data in terms of the percentages, I think is absolute, I know it is absolutely our hope to see these numbers continue to increase. While 60, maybe 70%, you know, if you look at that first bar graph with how close I feel to people at school, 60 to 70% sounds like a great number, a positive number. I think we can do even better. And I think now, based on, you know, what all of our students have been going through the past 11 months, going on a year now, I just really think that there's tremendous opportunity to improve upon this. Next slide, please. And I will turn, turn it back over to Aubrey.
All right. So very quickly, we just want to highlight some trends we're seeing around sleep health in students grades 6 through 12. So it's very clear by this graph that as students get older, they are getting less and less sleep. We go from almost 80% of students are sleeping eight or more hours a night in sixth grade to about 15% of students in grade 12 sleeping eight or more hours a night. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then at the same time, we're also seeing that as that stress goes up, students are having more trouble sleeping, and then the amount of sleep that they're getting goes down. But I think it's important, we're starting the discussions around sleep health more. It's not just happening in our district, it's happening in other districts. So I think these will be some interesting data points to keep an eye on in the next survey implementation.
For our next slide, Lori and I will, will both be chiming in here a little bit. But again, I really think this slide probably captures what this presentation and what our work at this time as a district is all about. You know, how, how does this data relate to our strategic plan as a district? And how does it drive the larger decisions? And how will it help us address some of these concerns that we absolutely have and that are real? Specifically, the goals in the strategic plan, innovative instruction and personalized learning, plus programs and pathways, and plus safe and supportive schools. Those three strategic plan goals, when you, when you break it down a little bit further, those are enhanced protective factors, better mental health, more connection to school, less stress. What do all these things equal when they're combined? Healthier youth and a healthier community. In terms of the innovative instruction and personalized learning that's going on currently, teachers at both the Coakley and the high school, you know, continue to develop and provide students with daily lessons that personalize their learning, that can assist in the development of that social and emotional competency, and really start to develop some of those lifelong positive habits. The programs and pathways component, Norwood High continues to enhance and expand its health pathways program for students who are interested in pursuing a career in the health allied fields. The program welcomes a diverse group of students with a variety of interests and talents. And after reviewing student survey feedback from some focus groups that went on at the high school recently, coupled with potentially some shift in scheduling next year at the high school, you know, NHS is confident and excited about the expansion of that health pathways program. And then finally, with, you know, in terms of the safe and supportive schools goal and initiative in our strategic plan, both the Coakley and the high school continue to provide professional development for our staff. And that's aimed at cultivating a sustainable culture, appreciation for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And, you know, the staff in both buildings has done a lot of work already this year, as I'm sure the committee already knows, working with World Savvy, Highlander Institute, really looking to develop that sense of cultural proficiency. And I'll let Lori add a little bit to this slide as well.
Thanks, Ryan. I think overall, the importance of us sharing the message about the Metro West Health Survey, albeit three, it feels like it's sort of three years outdated data, it still is really important data for us to be using. And I think it's, it's important for us to share with you all and with the community that this is one more sort of, of piece of data, one more way in which we are all working towards the strategic plan of the district. And this is a data piece that allows us to continue to look cross disciplines at our curriculum. It allows us to look at the whole child, allows us to look at the student who is coming to us every day. What are the factors that they are bringing with them that impede their, their learning? But it also allows us to look at what are the programs that we need to have in place to support our students? And all of that plays a role in the strategic planning around budgeting and making sure that we have the appropriate programs in place and making sure that we have the appropriate supports in place and all of those things. So all of this plays a huge role, and we're really looking forward to the administration of it in 2020, see what the data brings us. Because as we all know, the world we're living in right now is very different than the world we were living in in 2018. I think it's going to be a really good into the lives of our students that will help us drive where we're going in a lot of ways with our program. So we appreciate your time. If there's anything we can clarify for you, please let us know.
Thank you, Lori and Ryan and Aubrey for doing this. I know this was a project that was started back in 2019. And I know that, you know, both the middle school and the high school report are each like 250 pages. So you really did analyze much, much more than what was shared tonight. So I just want to acknowledge all your hard work and thank you for it. But are there questions or comments from the committee? Any, you already alluded to the budgeting and the policies and the strategic plan. But is there anything, Lori, Ryan, or Aubrey, that, like, the biggest takeaway you would like the committee to consider after your presentation?
You want to go, Lori?
I think one of the biggest takeaways is that we expect the landscape to look very different in the 2021 data. What we know just anecdotally and living the day-to-day is that the, the mental health piece already looks very different. already looks very different. And we are planning for that outside of even this data. And I think you'll see in some of the proposals that we're bringing forward in the FY twenty two budget that they reflect some of that. Just because of what we know, we're living and supporting and and working with on a daily basis. So I think there are some things that we already know, even prior to during the next survey, that we will look very different.
Thank you.
I'll just add it. Ask very quickly, it's not necessarily a big takeaway about the data, but just to thank the school committee for your continued partnership with Impact Norwood and making the survey possible for letting us implement it and working with us. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's a great partnership and I hope it continues.
And Aubrey, you just brought a speaker into the high school the other day, correct?
In middle school, yep, today.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I hear I hear good things about the high school. I didn't realize the middle school also had it as well, but thank you for helping that continue.
Of course, my pleasure.
Yeah.
It's an amazing partnership that we have and we're so thankful for it.
And I I would just add, you know, I mean, to to piggyback off what both Lori and Aubrey said, you know, I I've worked in several districts. You know, and and sometimes the the issues, the concerns don't really change all that much, but I I can honestly tell you that the attention to student needs and growth K through twelve, a- and and really how to develop those meaningful, genuine relationships between school and and home is is really phenomenal here in Norwood. So thank you to the school committee and Superintendent Thompson, because I know it it starts at the at the top. Thank you to the community. And and let's keep up the good work, because again, there's tremendous there's there's tremendous growth and always an opportunity out there, even during these challenging times. And and this community, Norwood, has has proven once again that they that that we really endorse and support that community approach. So keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you all. I hope you have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next appearance, which is pretty much a consistent appearance on our agenda. Is Mr. Gal Reese, who is here to join us again with the current health update.
Great. And it's a great line right into that about our collaboration, how it is so great in in Norwood. We're very fortunate to have it, this collaboration and and so many more. So we're gonna build on that. I'll jump in. Pull up my presentation. Thanks for having me, by the way. And I'll just dive into the report that will come out tomorrow night. It'll encompass the days of January twenty fourth to February sixth. Good news, in the last two weeks, we've seen a drop in our weekly case count. As you can see on the graph, a pretty significant drop from last week. We had two hundred and twelve cases in that two week period in in last week's report. That encompassed the two weeks before that, it was two hundred and eighty six. So that's a pretty significant drop that we're happy to see. And of course, as that goes down, does the rate, the average daily case count per hundred thousand obviously drops with that. And what I always, you have to look at also in conjunction with those case numbers is your percent positive. And to see a drop in the percent positive is also a good indicator. And that has been consistently dropping and drops a little slower. It's not as steep as the rate, but to see that come down too says that the case count drop is actually real. I think I talked about it last time. If the percent positive was going up and the case count was going down, you would have the indication that you're probably not meeting your testing requirements. And you're probably not catching a lot of the cases, so it's less accurate count. But again, to see them moving together is a good thing. I'm presenting the age data a little different this time, because I thought it was pretty stark when I went to adjust the numbers for this week's report to see the differences. So the blue lines are the last time I was in front of you. The last week's report, not the last time I was in front of you. And then obviously the red lines are this week's report. Now, obviously, our numbers are lower, so I would expect all the bars to be a little lower, but pretty significant drop in that younger age group. You know, some, you see drops in all of them, but that that was pretty significant, dropped thirty cases in a two week period. The average age, you know, still remains in the forties. We still have the same sort of range all the way from this this week's report is three, a three year old to a ninety nine year old. We talked about it last time, about twenty to fifteen percent of the cases tend to be school aged children. And that could be in any schools. And that's pretty much been consistent throughout the response. And then within this time period, also twenty three staff and students reported. And last time I was here, it was thirty eight. So good to see a drop there too. So all and all the indicators look good over the last two weeks of things going down. And I would say that's also the same across the state, that we've been seeing numbers coming down for for quite a while and on the state level too. And then I wanted to update the committee on the vaccine. So this is the latest graphic that the state has issued. Phase one, remember, was really healthcare providers, first responders. Those people are obviously still eligible for the vaccine and there are many of them that still need to be vaccinated. And since the beginning of February, they opened up phase two step one, which is the seventy five and older. I would say the first week was very bumpy, but this week, things have been going a lot smoother, a lot more access to appointments. A lot of the anxiety has calmed down. We locally tend are still only getting a small allocation of about a hundred doses a week. When you can imagine, there's thousands of people that need to be vaccinated. There is a lot of access for other clinics in the area, particularly where we're so close to Gillette. And from what I hear, they they have plenty of appointments available at Gillette. We know that's not always accessible to everybody, and that's why it's really important that we continue to do this locally. For those, particularly this population where travel and access to the Gillette clinic can be a challenge. Oh, little typo there, sorry. We have, we've administered about five hundred and ten doses and we have five clinics scheduled for next week. So we will continue to ramp up. We are starting, this week, we started the second doses for first responders. So it's sort of the movement for our response, where we're not only doing first doses, but we're also managing clinics for second doses. The the whole vaccine rollout really encourages people to get their second dose at the same place they got their first dose. And you've probably heard a lot about it in the news that, you know, nobody wants to waste even, you know, a dose of this vaccine. And depending on which, using Moderna or Pfizer, they come in certain dose requirements, and the Moderna is a ten dose vial. And once you puncture that vial, you have to use it within six hours. So managing your counts at the clinic is very important. And where we, you know, have such a small amount of vaccine, we really want to make sure that we manage those clinics and those appointments in factors of ten. So what helps us to do that is if the same people that attended their first dose clinic attend the corresponding second dose clinic, so those numbers match as best as possible. Obviously, it's not a perfect system and it's not always gonna work out like that, but really want to encourage people to do that. And the the other thing we're sort of thinking about as later phases will open up, and I think we talked last time that you know, early education in K through twelve workers were actually moved down in that second bullet, number two was moved up, so those sort of switched spots. So that put vaccinating our teachers and our workers in your building a little further down the plan. But what we also can look at is that I think there are going to be many people that are eligible in that second bullet, which is quite a large number of people. So it's individuals sixty five and older and individuals with two certain medical conditions. And those are listed on the state website on what those medical conditions are. So I think what we can start to think about for really all our departments across the town is how many employees would qualify in that step two, phase two? And think about getting those people vaccinated as soon as possible. And then, of course, we are still planning in the step three to to roll out vaccine for staff at the schools too, once they become eligible. And I'm open to any questions on the cases or our vaccine response.
Thank you, Segal. Are there questions or comments from the committee?
I just have one question for you, if you don't mind. With the new variants, is that something that's being tracked through testing?
Yes, the state does random samples and looking for new variants and actually does additional follow up with those cases to, you know, do a little more of that contact tracing and where they've been and tracing back also their exposures. So the state lab is looking at those and digging into them more. And then obviously, the work being done around how effective the vaccine will be against the different variants that are now circulating. And a lot, lot more to be learned about that.
You report it, like how many cases of different variants we're seeing? Do you expect that to happen?
I know the state has those numbers. I don't know if they're of the amount that they can report publicly, but they've talked about it to us on our weekly calls that they are tracking that. And I have to see, I don't think it's on the public, the daily or the weekly reports.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Segal?
Do you have a sense as to when the next steps will be opening up? If we do have, if that is one avenue to get our staff vaccinated, do we have a idea of when that might be happening?
The other graphic, I don't know if you remember from last time, they haven't changed that one, so it still says, you know, February, February, March and April for this phase two, the whole phase two. That's a pretty tight turnaround. I think a lot of the pressure for the seventy five year olds, we're we're not, I mean, just within a week and a half, amazing number of people have been vaccinated in that group. So the pressures on that population have reduced where there might be some more allocations. The problem is the vaccine is so restrictive. And then we also have to remember that there's still a lot of people in phase one, in that first bullet and phase two, that need to get their second doses. So that's a pull on the supply also. I should have started, the sure answer is no, I have no idea. But the long answer is, I'm hoping it's coming soon. I'm hoping by the end of the month, but obviously don't hold me to that. We learn when you learn. It's not like we did any inside scoop with the state.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
And Maya?
Segal, I just wanted to check, I believe based on this data that you're expecting that Norwood will still be in the red zone for this week.
Yeah, because our rate, our percent positive is definitely coming down and will be below that five percent threshold, but our rate is definitely over ten. Let me just go back to that real quick. So the two things that would put us into red would be our average daily case count per hundred thousand of being less than ten and or the percent positive being less than five. So if one of those triggers, then you're still in the red.
Yeah.
And and our rate is still pretty high at this point to move us down to the yellow.
All right, thank you. Anything else for Segal this time? All right. Well, thank you for joining us again for the update and for all the work that you're continuing to do in our community, Segal.
Thank you. Thank you for all your leadership.
Have a good night. So Dr. Thompson, we're now moving on to your report. And the first report is educational plan for the Coakley.
Okay. How do you want to? How do you want to proceed on that topic, Ben?
Do you want to share the slides that we created to guide the conversation?
Sure.
It's the the link on the agenda under Coakley, the hyperlink on Coakley.
Oh, there we go.
And Dr. Frazek, welcome.
All right. Sorry, trying to find the tab. Everybody see that?
We do.
Okay, all right. So the Coakley Middle School Building Project Educational Plan. So so this this educational plan is rooted in our 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 portrait of the graduate. And, you know, obviously, we know what that is, collaborators, creators, communicators, critical thinkers and problem solvings and and citizens. It also is rooted and comes from our strategic plan, our Norwood Technology Plan, the Coakley Middle School School Improvement Plan, Coakley Middle School Visioning Efforts from December and January. I don't know, Margot, do you want to talk a little bit more about the improvement plan and the visiting exercise?
Sure. We were in our first year of our two year school improvement plan, which focuses on blended learning, incorporating technology, improving writing across the curriculum, as well as incorporating sort of a whole programmatic look at how we do middle school, providing more choice and sort of innovative planning and learning. So that's certainly which are the foundations as we came to the visioning efforts or the the work that we're already doing at school. And how can a new school, how can new facilities, how can new spaces promote, expand and encourage that kind of work? If you can kind of see sort of the the core values that came up, really were easy to come up with. And they haven't, you know, they had a whole bunch of different choices out there and all of our little dots as we were putting them on, each one seemed to glob around the same ones, which was great to really see that. We had community members at the visioning sessions, we had teachers at the visioning sessions, school committee members, administrators. So really like a wide group of people were there. And to know that we're all sort of on this similar pathway of how we see a new building tied to the educational needs of the students here in Norwood was really fantastic. So, you know, number one, improving student learning, you know, like what do we need to really take our schools into the twenty first century in a sustainable fashion that helps them continue to grow and develop? Social emotional wellness. We've heard two presentations about that tonight, I think, already. So I think it's really clear that that's pretty important. Please ignore the cat, not a filter, not a cat. Oh, my God, he's been here all day. So annoying. Emotional wellness, a really big piece. Innovative teaching and leadership, as I kind of talked about, that's a real big piece of what's in our school improvement plan, as well as the district strategic plan. It's really looking at how do we change what school looks and feels like for kids. So it's more relevant, so it's more engaging, so it's more tied to where they see themselves in the future. Even starting, and I know I have eleven to fourteen year olds, and you might be thinking, Margot, they don't know where they're at on Monday, let alone where they are in the future. But you'd be surprised when we start peeling away layers. They've they're an amazing, amazing group. And then obviously, a positive learning culture is hugely important. We want our kids to feel like they belong. We want to feel like all of our kids have a place in our school. All of our students feel representative from all of the very many cultures that are here in Norwood. So that was really a piece of that. And then productive community partnerships and really developing some more of those. We have such a rich community, whether it's Moderna with vaccines. I keep teasing all my friends that I'm just like gonna and get my vaccine. They haven't given it. But, you know, whether it's Norwood Hospital, when it's back with us, whether it's the businesses downtown, you know, Tony Mizuko does a great job of helping with those pieces as well. So all of this kind of came together as we really talked about in a real concrete sense. What does that look like when you put it into a new building?
Yeah. So I, you know, I really look at the look at the educational plan as the us articulating all the work we've done around our strategic plan and our visioning for our district and how a new school would help that come to reality. So it really is taking a lot of that work that we've done over the last now four years around what we want our Norwood Public Schools to be and really putting it into a middle school format, or if you will, or a middle school envelope, and what that would be to help us get to that vision. So the plan is written right now, so it's open to the possibility of either Coke, the new Coakley being a six to eight or a five to eight school. A five to eight school will be organized into probably an upper or in a lower school, grouping fifth and sixth graders together, some of the and eighth graders together. The grouping would universally expose fifth graders to the teen teaching model, but in a developmentally appropriate way. Fifth grade teens would probably be two teacher teams, while six through eight would stay with our four teacher model. I don't know, Margot, if you want to add anything to?
No, I I think that's that's really it. It's thinking about, we're not just taking fifth graders in the same way that we don't take sixth graders and drop them into the middle of a shark tank. We think about, you know, how do we bring them with us so that they feel comfortable, they feel supported? And we really see fifth and sixth grade Um, and we really see fifth and sixth grade being more similar, similar. Um, when you think about those ages, then seventh and eighth grade are more similar. There's a, a distinct, anyone here who has a seventh grader or older. Um, probably is aware of the, I don't know, slight change that occurs when they go from sixth to seventh grade and fully become teenagers, which is what happens. So. Really kind of creating a small fifth, sixth grade school and a small seventh, eighth grade school. Um, focus on what's development, developmentally appropriate for both of those two groups is how we would look at that.
Yeah, and I just want to kind of go back to uh, you know, the difference between a middle school. And perhaps people who have gone to a junior high where, you know, you would have fifth graders walking through uh, different corridors and you wouldn't necessarily have a team of teachers. Uh, middle school is a different format. Uh, you have um, teams, you know, groups of about a hundred, hundred and ten. Uh, students of the same grade that are grouped together as a team and they kind of work. Uh, in those smaller learning environments. Uh, and that's consistent throughout a middle school. Uh, and you know, we are. Have, have made it pretty clear that we'd like to have, you know, the younger kids in one part of the builder and building and the older kids in another part of the building. Uh, and really keeping that in mind, that, that model changed thirty-some-odd years ago. Um, with middle schools being the, becoming the predominant um. Model. So if you were not in seventh or sixth or seventh or eighth grade thirty years ago, you probably have a very different ideas to what this type of school would look like. And I need to stress that it would be small learning environments, the fifth graders and the sixth graders would be separate. Um, and they, they would be with a team of teachers and as a former middle school uh, teacher and principal, I used to joke that. You know, the middle school teachers come together and plot against the children for their, for their benefit. Uh, I use that kind of tongue-in-cheek and joking, but they come together, they talk about kids, they make sure that they are successful and give them that support. As a transition from childhood to, you know, early adulthood. Uh, and it is a very good model and. We want to take the best of that model and make sure this new Coakley Middle School is developed and brought to life. So that is going to happen. Uh, let's see, Margot, do we miss anything that was on this page?
I think we talked about those things. So the only thing it does talk about too is um, two. The potential for two separate dining spaces. And as a person who helps do the schedule and manages those, I, I think I'm more excited for the potential of two dining rooms. Uh, cause it really means that you, right now, I, my schedule revolves around three lunches and making sure those happen. And how do they happen? And I'm telling you, in a pandemic, it was so much easier. No, not. Uh, so, um, so having two lunch rooms, especially in a five-to-eight, means that now you're only dealing with two lunchtimes. So. For those of you who have children that currently, even if they're at home, have lunchtime at ten fifteen in the morning. There's nothing wrong with pizza at ten fifteen in the morning. Um, we would be able to kind of move lunch to more lunchish times. Um, and more importantly, our schedule could revolve a little bit less around lunch and a little bit more about what's best for kids. Um, which would, would be amazing.
Right. Um, so the other, uh, the other piece that, you know, so often people ask, well, why, why, what's the advantage of having, uh, you know, the fifth grade up? At the elementary model? It, it does give them a, a chance to grow, chance for uh, activities. Uh, after school that are more age-appropriate. Uh, some of the STEM and STEAM things that we're doing. Uh, would, would, would be more of a central part of the curriculum. Um, so there are definitely uh, advantages around programming. Obviously, moving the fifth grade up would mean you would kind of have uh, two groups of kids finishing their elementary uh, time at the same time. Um. So those are kind of some of the things that I thought of. Can you think of anything else you would add along that line, Dr. Fraser?
No, um, yeah, and so, I mean, so obviously there's still a sixteen-model as part of the plan too and, and Tess kind of noted. A, a couple of the benefits if we, if Norwood does decide to stay with the fifth grade at the elementaries is, um, number one, we have, we have. Great elementary schools with excellent uh, work happening there. Um, they get to stay more in their neighborhood school. Um, and sort of maintain that current grade five experience and um, know that those, those things, those traditions, those, those pieces of community are important too.
Okay, do you want to speak a little bit?
I could talk about this for hours, but I'll try and keep it down.
That's why I, I didn't want to steal you, steal your, you know.
So I think some of the most exciting pieces are some of the new spaces we would be able to add. So the first one. Whether we talk about them as uh, maker spaces or project-based spaces. Um, so our STEM room currently. Both of our STEM rooms used to be um, vocational arts rooms. So they have all the tools. That my STEM teachers need to do the building part. Where they struggle with is having the technology piece that they need. To do the design part of design and modeling. So these rooms would have both um, what's described as a clean part and a dirty part of the room where the clean part. They're designing, they're learning, they're using CAD, um, they're using the same type of programming that. P- I hate saying out in the real world, because that's not it, like out in the professional world. Um, engineers are using, but they're using it at the school and then um, they can. Move back and forth between the clean room and the, the dirty room as they're building and going back and forth and creating prototypes and testing things. And if any, anyone out there follows me on Twitter, you've seen my teachers doing that even this year. Um, so that's pretty exciting to have some of those pieces. Um, all of my teachers have latched on to this black box theater piece and just have a million ideas of what they would do with that. It's just sort of a shared collaborative space, like currently my eighth grade teachers, um, English teachers get together, squish themselves into two of our rooms. And perform a Midsummer Night's Dream. So imagine if you would, all the kids kind of lined up on one side and everyone else sitting on the floor. Well, they could actually do sort of like mini performances, um, as does uh, sixth grade does it. Can't remember what play they do, seventh grade does A Christmas Story in Roma, um, not Christmas Story, but A Christmas Carol and Romeo and Juliet. And then social studies has already started talking about debates and that they could do debates in there or mock Senate. Um, General Linsky was trying very hard to get me to build a, a model senate in the new school and I'm like, um. Or Linsky, that's probably not happening. I'm just gonna toss it out there. Um, I go, but we could maybe get pictures and put it up in there. So. Just a black box theater, just a small space. And it could also be used for um, productions at night, for small productions at night. Um, we do have a really robust and growing drama program at the middle school that we've had since I came there, could be that theater background. Uh, maybe, uh, so um, so not only during school, but after-school space. Um, and the virtual reality lab, which uh, we already use virtual reality, um, our seventh grade teachers, they have a classroom set that they pass around. Um, so this would be able to be expanded, everything from, I've seen uh, math use it. To really look and kind of explore equations. Science can do experiments that you can't, you know, safely do in a middle school classroom. Can be done in a virtual lab, um, social studies, traveling places, ELA. So there's just all kinds of um, exciting ways. And I think. Even the, what virtual reality was a year ago to what it is now, um, is amazing. So. Two, three years from now is when we're actually in the point of purchasing the pieces for this, I imagine will be even um, more extended. Um, so then the last two pieces are sort of uh, student collaboration spaces or commons, which are just um. And I'm not an architect, I want to be really, really clear about that. So I know that they have cool architect-y ways of describing these things, but basically it's where we can put. Slightly larger groups of kids together, um, and do stuff without uh, shoving them into really tight spaces, which I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm excited to shove kids back into really tight spaces. I'm sure I'll freak out the first time, but um, it'll be kind of cool. Uh, but different places where kids can get together and some of these places are just like little tiny alcoves right outside of a classroom. So like right now. All the time I'm walking around my halls and uh, kids from foreign language or world language class will be sitting in pairs on the floor. Just in the hallway on their Chromebooks and like talking to each other in, in a different language and doing recordings. So imagine if, you know, in a couple of different spaces in these little neighborhoods. There's like a little cubby that they can actually go into and. Um, classroom, so the teacher can be. Around the classroom, but still have eyes outside. So it's pretty collaboration spaces. I'm almost not sure how to describe them because we don't have any of those currently. I'm like, I think it's a place where teachers can actually go and get work done. Um, and maybe there are things like copy machines there and, oh, um, you know, we've seen a, a couple of visions of them and. Basically, it looks like a place where professionals get to go and do work. And for me, for, for my staff, that's a really exciting piece and, and. Ninety-nine percent of any building project is absolutely for students, but when you have teachers that have places to work, they do better work for students. It's, it kind of works that way. So um, places that, uh, these are, there was a co- I think they put in two of them. Um, and so where you can get larger groups of teachers together, where we can do professional development with teachers, where they can meet together, they can have parent meetings together. Um, but just places that, a- again, I, I think when we toured Natick and they showed us a sample one. You just walked in and you felt like this is a place where professionals go to do really good work. Um, and that was really exciting. To, to have, not just have it be a classroom or sitting in a um, desk with a chair attached to it by metal and formica. Um, so, so those are just uh, some of the new spaces, um, and my best description of them. But those are some of the things that um, are all described and, and. The educational plan goes into a lot of detail about why educationally those places um, are needed. And how they were, well, again, do all those things that we talked about, create innovative learning opportunities, push our education forward. Um, push kids' learning and thinking and focusing on the future forward.
Right. Yeah, I know, but, well, we could, we could just, we could just feel your, your excitement. But this, this goes along with how we're trying to improve instruction. Uh, you know, and learning in our system. And it really is talking about. Project-based working and collaboration, both for students and for teachers. And really trying to give our students an early, early age, some experience with the kinds of learning and work. And problem-solving that they might choose or look at a- as they start to design their academic career, leading to their career, career. So then academic neighborhoods, um, that's, that is one of these um. Architect terms, uh, but it really is designing the spaces to support uh, the teaming structure. So I don't know, Margot, if you want to talk a little more detail.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, it's, i- if you think of it sort of like pods, so if I am a sixth-grade blue student. I go to my sixth-grade blue neighborhood and that's where all four of my core classes are. That's where I'm going to spend the majority of my day. Those are the teachers that I work with. There's probably some shared spaces that we kind of talked about in there. Um, and then there's one of those neighborhoods for each of the teams that we would have. So if it's a six-to-eight, there would be nine. Um, a five-to-eight, it, it works out to be twelve, because, but not, but they're set up a little bit differently in fifth grade just because of the. Um, using a smaller team model for fifth graders, so pairs of teachers, so six pairs of teachers as opposed to three groups of four. It's a good thing I was a math teacher.
Okay. And then we're going to talk about other space uh, opportunities. So this, so these bubbles kind of give a general idea of, of how you might.
Yeah, we're not building a circular school, I don't believe. Would be kind of neat, would be interesting. So one of the things that um, was really important, so thinking about safety and security, both of the building and of our students. Is always um, really important. And one of the ways that they talked about doing that is you put the. The places that have the most access to the community kind of separated from the places that are predominantly for students in school. Um, they kind of call it a central spine. Um, and on one side of the spine is all those places that I, I think everyone here knows, the Coakley is used. I feel like twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for twelve months out of the year. Um, there's rarely a time when there's not something happening at the Coakley, which is great, and the way a building should be used in a community. So kind of keeping those things in one place so that the back half of the building, now there's primarily classrooms, academic spaces, places for teachers and kids. Um, can be separately locked off, like on the weekends or in evenings and things of that nature. And also putting them in a way so that. Um, if we do have that five-to-eight model, that five-to-six might be on one side, seven, eight on the other, or in different levels. So. The shared spaces, so the shared specialists, the shared um, activities are sort of in the middle of those two spaces. So in other words. Um, there's no eighth grader that would have any reason to be wandering in a fifth-grade neighborhood and they're pretty tall, so they're easy to point and find. They're easy to find now. I'm like, what are you doing over here? Um, so this kind of helps with that too, as of where are those shared spaces.
Right. And, and often you can, you can separate these with, with gates or, or, or locked doors. So you're only using certain parts of, parts of the building at certain times. Looking at, at, at the new building, uh, providing multiple opportunities to connect the students to be outdoors. Uh, and have outdoor learning, learning spaces. Um, I don't know if you want to add anything more to the slide, Dr. Fraser?
No, and what was nice was that the architects have seen that we already tried to do that as much as we can from simple ways that we do it by, we have recess. Um, I know most middle schools don't, but I think it's just really important to get kids outside. Um, we've started to, and my teachers take kids outside all the time. Um, we've added a couple picnic tables in the back. Um, as our, our uh, very low-tech outdoor classrooms. So this kind of takes it to the next, next level and really creates spaces where the science class that's doing earth science can go outside. They brought all the dirt inside this year, so I'm really hoping that, you know, by the time we get this, maybe they can go outside to the dirt. Um, and do things like that and just lots of opportunities for that. Um, whether it's, and also like. Uh, I know the elementary schools already do sort of sustainable food systems, so kind of adding that piece, growing that up to the middle school. Um, which would be amazing and there's, we have some outdoor garden spaces, but really like they're way far away and kind of off in a corner and not. Um, super accessible. So making gardening spaces that I imagine our students in our PACS program. Could be growing food and learning about food and then cooking food. Um, so adding those life skill pieces in and saying, um, when the LEAP program comes to us, our PLC. Students as well. Um, just the more hands-on, real-world connectedness that we create for our students, um, for all of our students is so important.
And one thing that is uh, important in the planning is, you know, for the continuation of the community use of Coakley Middle School. Um, and, you know, so we have the list here of, you know, all the different organizations that, that use CMS. You know, the Recreation Department, the Health Department, uh, Fourth of July Parade, Youth Sports, Youth Little League. Soccer, youth ba- basketball, youth hockey, Teachers Driving Academy. Uh, the Babysitting Course, Challenger Basketball, Challenger Football, those are just a few. Um, but they utilize not only the outdoor fields, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, the auditorium, uh, and the art rooms. So those are, those are considerations, you know, we don't want to design a building that i- is going to limit. Um, you know, our, our, our role in the community. So we are, that is part of uh, of this educational plan as well. Okay, so then let's talk a little bit about the plan itself. So, so the plan basically is the educational philosophy that. Gives the argument for the design of the building. Um, and sometimes this argument, if you will, uh, can help uh, support. Funding and um, and, and different pieces of, of the building being built. For instance, you know, if you, if you look at the Natick project, they just felt uh, finished, they have a hydroponics lab in there, because that was part of their science program. Uh, and they did get reimbursement for that because it was well-articulated and existing program. So we have to go through not only um. What we want our programs to be and, and align that with our mission, vision and strategic plan, improvement plan for the Coakley. But also look at existing uh, programs that we have and how we can continue those going forward. So um. Margot, seeing that you were one of the, if, the chief architect of the plan, do you want to go through the um, table of contents here? What, what these different sections are? Did I lose Margot? Margot? Think I lost Margot. Yep, we lost Margot. Well, I guess I'm.
Did we lose Dave too?
No, I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if she's gonna pop up somewhere. Alright, well, I will, uh, I will try to start. So obviously, you know, the, the vision statement. The mission statement for the Coakley Middle School, the historical context of Norwood, um, and the educational vision. And again, those come from. Um, and the educational vision, and again, those come from, uh, the documents that we have already, um. Already been working on in the district and have established. Um, the grade in school configuration, and this is where this plan is a little bit different because we are still in the process of deciding. Uh, whether to look at this as a five through eight or six through eight. Um, so this plan is a little bit larger than a regular educational plan because we have to talk about both configurations. Uh, class size policies in the district and citing those. School scheduling methods, and this is an area that, uh, obviously Margot has a lot of influence with, based on how she schedules the building. And how the schedule in the building will influence the usage of all the rooms and such going forward. Um, spatial organizational and facilities deficiencies impact. Um, I, this is a. Pretty lengthy section mainly because, uh, the building was built a long time ago. Um, and has a long list of deficiencies at this point in time. Including, uh, core systems in the building that do not work the way they should. Um, and when I get to the other part of, uh, our superintendent's report, I'll be talking about, uh, space usage and how the Coakley. Uh, we've lost, we cannot, under the current guidelines, use a third of that building because the ventilation is not to the standards. In our, uh, COVID situation. Uh, teaching methodology, methodology and structure, and this is an important aspect. Because we need to design a middle school that matches the methodology of how we are approaching. Um, our education, and we talked earlier about the problem and project-based collaborative teaching. That we are bringing to the middle school, so that is an important aspect of this. The structure, how we designed and set up the middle school, we heard us talk earlier about teams and, and neighborhoods. Uh, what the great, grade five experience would look like at the middle school, and that was a good conversation with grade five teachers, bringing that into the plan. Uh, teacher planning and collaboration, how that happens. Um. So that was an important piece. Uh, you heard, uh, Margot's long talk about lunch programs and dining. And having one dining room, one dining space for, uh, for a large, uh, group of people. Um, is, um, you know, it, it, it makes scheduling a difficult, so, um. So that's kind of the table of context with it. You managed to get out of that, Margot, another back. So, um, you want to, you want to go.
Internet catastrophe.
Yes, so we've got the, the second parts of the contents, the access and security, performing arts. You want to talk a little bit quickly about what is kind of in those sections of, of the.
Sure, um, it really just starts to kind of get into, some of it's kind of the nuts and bolts of what is it that we need in the building, so. Um, access and security is exactly what it sounds like, whether it's talking about cameras, door passes, um. Uh, front office security, really kind of technology around those security systems. Performing arts and visual arts are really talking about those places. So for visual arts, looking at, you know, two art rooms. Um, uh, a space for kiln and claywork, um, which in terms of health and safety is hugely important. Right now, we have the kiln sitting in one of the art rooms, um, which is not the best in terms of. Air filtration and all those sorts of things. Uh, wellness. And, um, so wellness, obviously, there's a gym and, and we talk about, I know, um, there's been talk of. On the building committee of making the gym bigger than what the MSBA says, and that's more of a community aspect necessarily than, um, just a school need. But what we really looked for was adding in. Two pieces, one is a fitness center that can be used for PT and OT by our, um, substantially separate special education programs. And students that need that. Also for students that, um, especially at the middle school age, maybe just kind of struggle to participate. In sort of regular big gym game activities, um, students having other opportunities to run on a treadmill to do. Um, like dance video type exercise or just different types of exercises in a fitness space. And then the health classroom is, so our wellness teachers, um, all, all of our students receive. Um, health education embedded with physical education, um, that's really important, I think, for all the reasons that. Were spoken about earlier this evening. So right now they float around to whatever classroom they can kind of find and have kids in there. So having a dedicated space for health for them. Um, and it might be hard for. People who don't teach to understand the importance of sort of a dedicated space for what you teach, but there's so much more you can do if you have a space to. Put up visuals, to have materials at hand, to have, um. A- all of my teachers are well aware of what it's like to try and, um, travel around with a cart, uh, everywhere that you go with stuff this year, so. A dedicated space for that was really important as part of our, um, wellness curriculum. Uh, special education, one of the, one of the wonderful things about our community is that we have more programs that we keep within the schools. In order to keep from sending students out of district. And while I, I can only imagine that the cost savings that that implements. The far more powerful piece is that we are keeping our students with their community peers, and that is huge. Um, and. So having these special education spaces, and this was one of, um, just really our core values, was that special education should be embedded within our entire school. So there's no special education wing where kids go to get those services. It's the special educators for inclusion are all absolutely within part of the neighborhoods. Um, the sub-separate programming, those classrooms that do need a larger separate space, they're embedded in different parts of the school. Um, we really looked at if it's a five to eight school, splitting up those rooms so that we have a five, six and a seven, eight. Because otherwise, one group of those students is not going to be with their peers, and that's not what we want. The idea is to fully include all of our students to the extent that is educationally possible. Um, and we see that as anywhere from four to seven out of seven blocks a day. Um, where we have kids included with their general education peers working collaboratively, so. Um, so the special education section really kind of describes all of that, um, does our, uh. Does some numbers in terms of number of students, the number of staff, uh, to really kind of explain why do we need some of the spaces and I. I think it's another area that we will be different than other communities because we keep so many of our students here. Um, which means that you need more space for them here than, um, sending them out. But I think we have a really strong program and our, our really dead dedication to. Including all of our students, um, will help us with that. Uh, literacy and language is our, our growing English language population and having some dedicated spaces. They are all fully included as well. Uh, but obviously when we have students that come to us at level one where. Um, they are speaking primarily in their home language, um, and learning English. Um, they do English acquisition as well, so having some spaces for that. Um, project lead the way, I think you've heard me talk about a few times here, uh, that we have in, uh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, our design and modeling. We started this year, last year we started computer science innovators and makers. Uh, and like I said, if you follow me on Twitter and all, you've seen some pretty amazing projects that our students in Christina Seratus classes have done. If they've ended their semester. So it is truly project-based learning, it is, let's give you a bunch of skills, let's give you a challenge. Let's see what you come out with at the other end. So students are doing ninety percent of all of the work, they are hands-on, they are developing. Um, so we really talked a, a little bit about that in the plan because project lead the way is. Um, along with like world savvy and a few of the other project-based learning programs that we started over the past couple of years. Are the reasons that we need these new innovative spaces, um, that we are. We do really well because I have amazing teachers and I can only imagine what they would be capable of, given, um, all of the tools available to them. Transportation policy, I'm going to turn it over to Dave because all I know is that buses show up and drop kids off at my school. Not really sure how else it works besides that. I think they go out in other places. I don't know.
Yeah, so that, so we do, you know, so this, this highlights how, how we transport, uh, kids back and forth to the, uh, Coakley. Uh, the one thing is that, you know, we obviously need to do some more study on this, but we might need to, uh. Possibly add more buses if we add the fifth grade, uh, to that, but again, that needs to be more of a detailed. Um, study and, and, and look at that. Obviously, school start time, uh, might influence, uh, the number of buses we have available and things along that line at that time, so. Um, so that's an area I think we need to spend a little more time on. Um, I think the idea is, is there would be a bus from each neighborhood, but I. I'm not quite sure the numbers support, uh, needing that many, but we'd have to look at it a little bit deeper. Um, obviously functional, spatial relationships and key agencies, you know, how does it, how is it all going to fit together? Am I correct with that, Margot? Um, and then obviously, you know, we've kind of already talked about the community usage piece, and that is, that is a major concern. Uh, consideration rather going forward, uh, because the amount of time that the Coakley is, is used for the, for community. I think that is, um, the last slide.
Uh huh.
So. Stop sharing, join you guys so I can see your faces again. And then, um, we have gotten, uh, some, uh, feedback from the committee, so thank you for that, but I don't know if there's other questions on. What you've looked at or other things you would like to, um, this, thi- this is a working draft, this is the first draft, we do need to go back. Um, and, and look at several of these items again. We do have to do some paring down with our original. Visioning of this and how it impacts, uh, the space and design of the building, because we are over in a few categories with our space piece. Um, and it's, you know, it's a balance. I mean, you want to build a building. That is going to last you for the next fifty-plus years, so it's got to have the, the flexibility to do that. Um, and, I mean, because if you build it too small and too specific, if it doesn't have the flexibility. When the educational process changes, then it's kind of a big deal. So, uh, that, you know, space enough classroom, you're better off having a few extra classrooms than having too few many as we. Uh, can see when we go out of the back of the Coakley and see how many, uh, portable classrooms back off the back, is it eight? When they're back there, six? Six, thank you. Um, so, you know, if you don't design it with that. Vision of, of what is possible and flexibility, you kind of run into problems if you don't, you don't want to, we want to solve problems for the long term.
So Dr. Thompson, just to, um, frame for the committee and also the community. Um, you know, as you said, it is still a draft, but the draft is in the school committee packet, the school committee has had access to that. Uh, for about the last week, and it's currently fifty-four pages, um, but will probably grow, um, as we take feedback and, and, and do more work on it. Um, and in addition to the, um, educational plan, there is the space summary. Uh, that was reviewed on Monday at the middle school building committee, um, and I did link to all those materials in the school committee packet. So everybody has access to, um, that as well. Um, so both of those are still drafts. And at our next meeting on February twenty-fourth, we'll be joined by Alan Slater and AI Three and Compass to go through, um, the school summary. And the, uh, educational plan in more detail. Um, and then if needed, they will also join our meeting on March tenth, um, but we do need to vote as a committee. By March tenth to submit the educational plan and space summary. Um, we are not yet voting on five through eight versus six through eight, that comes next, that vote has to happen by the end of May, early June. Um, but the most important task on our plate as a school committee over the next two to three meetings. Is approving the educational plan, which again, tonight is just in its draft form. Um, but either the next meeting or the meeting after, we will have to approve to submit that to the MSBA. Um, so based off of what you heard from Dr. Thompson and Dr. Frazek tonight, based off of the materials that you've seen in your packets so far. Are there questions? Is there guidance from the committee, um, so that Dr. Thompson and Dr. Frazek can work more, uh, before our next meeting? Maya?
Um, so first I want to thank everybody for all the work on this, um, document. I did, uh, read it over the weekend. I, as you know, have already provided some feedback, um, but overall, I thought it was, um, an impressive document. Uh, but I guess the, the one thing I wanted to discuss is, um, how we're going to be talking about some of the. The staffing requests that are, are part of this document, um, and I want to make sure we have an understanding of. What staffing requests are, um, kind of inevitable, regardless of whether or not we have a new building and a new grade configuration. What staffing requests, um, are perhaps related to the new building, what staffing requests might be related to the five to eight model. And, um, you know, a lot of the stuff in the, um, document is about pedagogy and things like that. And I can offer no, um, expertise on that, and I don't have, I don't pretend to. But, um, when it comes to the staffing, that obviously has a very big impact on budget. And that's something that the school committee does have a very large role in. So I want to make sure that we're given all the information we need. For our next meeting so that we can make some informed decisions, because if we are approving a document that says. We will be increasing staffing in a certain area, then we need to be prepared to back that up. So, um, that was the one area of that document that I felt, um, the school committee needed to have a, a more of a discussion. And so I was hoping that all that information can kind of be pulled out for us so that we can have that conversation at our next meeting. And then hopefully sign the, approve the document at that point.
Yeah, so there are, I mean, and part of it is dependent, I mean, if you stay with the current configuration, there's less reshuffling of. Folks, but if you, um, if, you know, you move the fifth grade up, you need to have people to do the art, the music. You know, those sorts of things, let alone, you know, the teachers of fifth grade, but some of that would be reallocating. Um, people or moving people in some cases, um. But there are some prog- programmatic decisions that we need to make. One, one is around wo- world language, because that is something we offer at the middle school. Uh, it is something, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Frazek, we are struggling even right now with the current staffing. Uh, but if we do some sort of introduction to foreign language in grade five, that would be a personal. The reality is, we're talking about something five years in the future. So, and I think Margot, uh, has kind of a, a s- a staffing plan put together right now. But what it does not take into account is what. Positions are already in the district that might be, you know, so for instance, what, what, what an art teacher move from. An elementary school was, you know, to do fifth grade and then come to the middle school. So those are conversations we need to have around that. But one, one piece, you know, and again, it goes back to strategic plan, it is talk, we do have, uh, in there, trying to expand. Foreign language, um. So it is, and, you know, it, it's one of those things, when you're running a building and you have different people getting different lengths of preps or amounts of preps. It's, it's, you know, an equity issue in the building and that causes.
I completely understand that this is a complicated issue. I'm just asking that it all be spelled out for us in advance of our next meeting. That's what my request.
Yep.
Yeah, and Margot, I know that you started to prepare that spreadsheet, which I, I did share with everybody, I apologize. Margot sent it to me on Monday, and I thought I sent it to the rest of the school committee on Monday, but it was in my draft, so. I did send out earlier today, um, it's, it's linked in the packet, that was my mistake. Um, but if I'm reading what you created correctly, Dr. Frazek, um, so you're twenty-five, twenty-six. Which is the earliest that we would have a new middle school. Um, if we go at the five through eight, obviously we have to move fifth grade teachers up, so it would be a reallocation of twelve fifth grade teachers. Where currently, I think we have thirteen fifth grade teachers. Is that correct, Dr. Thompson, across the district?
I'm not sure, I'm not, sitting here right now, I'm not sure, but we, w- w- we're not looking at adding any more fifth grade classroom teachers.
Right, so the, so the classroom teachers, I believe if we go with the five through eight model, is either equal or minus one. Um, but if we are offering word language to fifth grade, that is an FTE that would be requested in twenty-five, twenty-six. You would need additional guidance counselor in twenty-five, twenty-six. So I think that. I kind of have a handle on the fifth grade from all the discussions that I've been in, but what I don't fully have a handle on, and I agree with Maya. Um, is the areas in the ed plan, just world language in general and STEAM and STEM. Like there's references, the music program, I think we're, we're talking about maybe an additional orchestra teacher. So it is referenced throughout the plan, it's just hard to piece it all together, so just maybe like a very clear. Uh, if we do six through eight, this is what we would need no matter what building we're in. But if we do six through eight in a new building, this would be the additional FTE request, and then if it's a five through eight, what does that fifth grade staffing look like? Is, is that accurate, Maya, what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
And I think what I shared with you, Teresa, is probably, um, like just a really early outline. Very specifically done from the eyes of your middle school principal, and looking at what she knows she needs over the next five years and, um, taking. an educated guess based on, okay, if we, if I just take my model and build fifth grade, what, what do I need? And, and yes, I don't know where, where that comes from because I don't know what's out there in the fifth grade. Um, so I think we could probably start with that and then really flush it out with, you know, if, if we want to add STEM in grade five, if we want to add world language in grade five, and, and we talk about those things in terms of space because I'd rather be talking about, um, that's what we're doing in the ed plan is talking about space, but I think we can definitely add in, um, I don't know whether we, a- and this is a question maybe more for AI three or, or Compass, whether we add it into the ed plan. Definitely we need it for school committee and for knowledge in terms of the overall piece. Um, and whether or not we put it directly in the plan or not. I don't know whether they want it.
My understanding and maybe either Dave or Dana, since Dana's been through this process before, I think the budget component is what we have to submit when we make our decision of which grade configuration. I know there's like a budgetary piece at that point. Um, I don't think I'm making that up. Can anybody, um, confirm that that's the correct timeline?
You know, Dana?
You have to submit an initial, but since this is so far out, it's, it's understood that things will change between now and twenty-twenty-five. So what we have as an ed plan and what we have as a proposed budget and a proposed staffing plan are frameworks to, in, in which we, you know, get started. But there will be, um, adds and subtracts as we move forward over the next four years. Things like what if we lose eighty students in the next four years in the Norwood public schools? What if we gain another ninety students in the next five years? So those things have to be figured in as we move along. This is just really the initial framework from which we start. It's not a finished document.
Right. So, so this, so Margot has a plan of what she thinks she needs. I say that respectfully, but that has not gone through. We have not had the opportunity to sit with the elementary principals, our director of fine arts and talk about what is out there that could be used at the middle school and what is new. So we're not that far off from that. But.
No, but I think that's probably our next step in a good discussion.
Right.
Maya.
So I completely appreciate that anything that we're talking about five years in advance is just a projection. But I also recognize that this document will be, um, a very important document, not just for the MSBA, but for the community. This is a public document and people who are wondering, why do we need a new middle school? And is this a good idea? They're going to be reading this document. So if they read the document and they come away with the belief that well, if we have a new building, that means we have to add a certain amount of staff. Uh, we need to really be justifying that decision. If, if the truth is that we know we need to add this staff and we're just kind of talking about it in regard, you know, at the same time as the building, but it's not really related to the building, then I want to make sure that that's clear too, because I just need to make sure that we are accurately representing to the community, what choice the community is going to be asked to make about a year from now.
Right. Yeah, the, I'm, I, I, I'll be completely upfront. Uh, I'm not based on the timing because we have this meeting. We have a week of vacation and then we have another meeting. I, I'm, I'm a little nervous about promising I'm gonna, we're gonna have that kind of staff discussed and out to everybody by the Monday after vacation. Um, because I'll be kind of honest. I, 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 I do want these folks to have a little bit of a break. So, um, it might need to be after that meeting or the, or the meeting after, I don't know. We can get back to you on that, but I just want to be upfront with the problem. Yeah.
Sorry, Dr. Thompson, just the, the thing about that though is we are on, you know, the MSBA timeline and this does have to be voted on. My understanding is by the March tenth meeting. Um, and not that any of us necessarily want to add more meetings, but if it's really not feasible to have this information to us by our next meeting, I think the only option we're looking at as a district is adding another school committee meeting, um, March third. And just want to put that out there because I don't think if, if we don't have the information that Maya's requesting and the others might request, um, tonight for the February twenty-eighth meeting, I, I don't think it's fair or feasible for the committee then to vote on the tenth. But that's just my perception. Um, yeah, Dana.
Yeah, I, I think there's a little confusion about the ed plan. And I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing. And, and maybe I misspoke earlier. What I've reviewed the native plan, the holy oak plan and some others. Um, when you submit the ed plan, you're not submitting your budget or staffing projections for the next several years. Those are really two separate items. And I agree with committee member Maya that that should be taken up, but it should be taking up, taken up separately from approval of the ed plan. Those are really two separate votes, not, not the same, you're not submitting to MSBA the town of Norwood's staff projections. You're submitting the
But the ed plan does reference in at least three places, plans to increase staffing due to the new school.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So when you're voting on that ed plan, that's what you would have to take that into consideration. But that's not an MSBA requirement that, um, MSBA would not allow the plan or allow the plan based on staffing projections. They're building it based on number of kids. Does it fit the program? Is it, is it pedagogically sound? Um, that's what they're framing it on. Whether the school committee supports adding two world language versus one art teacher is irrelevant to MSBA. And I just want to make sure you know, those are, those are two conversations going down the tracks at the same time. But one could happen without the other.
So, so with that said, and I do understand it's like two simultaneous conversations, but not all for the MSBA. Um, what we submit in the ed plan though is really critical because that ed plan is used to generate the space summary. And then my understanding is that throughout this whole process from now to twenty-twenty-five, if NSBA has any questions on space or what they'll reimburse or what we're building, they bring it back to the ed plan.
That's accurate.
Yes.
Absolutely accurate, but you just want to make sure that you're, you're voting on the vision of the ed plan. And then school committee members, um, absolutely have to have as, as their baseline. This could entail adding one position, adding two, adding three, adding fourteen. You know, adding zero, that absolutely is part of the discussion. But I think you can have those at the same time that you're saying yes to the ed plan or no to the ed plan. You can still have those conversations. Cause again, when you think of the window of time, so many variables will come into play. It's really hard to say that you would vote for or against this plan based on adding two teachers or not adding two teachers. Those are really two separate dialogues.
Okay. Can I ask from the committee, um, are there other aspects of the plan when you reviewed it or anything that you heard tonight that you do want to ask Dr. Thompson to look into more for the next version of that plan? Joan.
Uh, respectfully, I'd like to reinforce Maya's point that at least having that skeleton staffing, and I understand, um, the issue is that we are not beholden to the MSBC, the Math Building Association. We are beholden to the folks of Norwood and we're stewards of that budget. And this committee just went through a brutal override process. And we're all very cognizant of the fact that we do not want to be putting anything out there that's going to violate promises that we made to the community. Even if that is five or four years down the line, when some of us may not be on this committee anymore. Um, and so I do think that I, I understand what you're saying, but I would like to see, um, best guesses, recognizing that they're estimates, good faith estimates, not going to be held to anything. But we have a responsibility, given that we just had to fight so hard. And I say we, and everybody in the committee knows that it was really a community effort. Spearheaded by a couple of folks not on this community, um, on this committee, uh, that just to get curriculum. And we have, we have to be careful that we are not making promises about grandiose things that we can't plan to cover.
Right.
Any other feedback at this time on the ed plan for Dr. Thompson and Dr. Frazek? Okay. I would just encourage if anything else does come up as you read through the plan, please email, um, sooner rather than later. Um, we do have, um, you know, working group meetings with AI three and Compass. Um, we do have to schedule another ed meeting, meeting um, with AI three. So there is a lot of work to do before our next school committee meeting. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Frazek, for your time tonight.
Thanks.
Uh, Dr. Thompson, moving on to the next part of your report, an update on the parameters of reopening.
Yep. Let me, uh, get on the right slide, get the presentation up. And then, oops. No. Hang on. Gee. All right. Let's see if I can, uh, do this correctly. So. How's that look? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, uh, this is our update. We're going to update on, uh, quote unquote reopening. Um, I do want to emphasize, uh, to the community that we are open. We opened, uh, quickly. We opened as full as we could from the, uh, from the get-go. But we're going to go through kind of our current status and guidelines. Uh, the challenges that, um, we'll be looking at and facing going forward and the future work that, uh, we as a district will need to do to change or expand our hope. So thi- this is from a Bloomberg article that just came out with, um, with President Biden's, um, talking about or plan to quote unquote reopen schools. Um, reopen schools is not necessarily one where all schools, where all students are in person, five days a week. Many students are likely to shift to a hybrid schedule with a mix of online and in-person learning as millions of kids have so far. The arrangement does, is not often necessary to the arrangement is often necessary to keep class sizes small enough to meet social distancing requirements, prevent the coronavirus's spread. Other students could opt to stay virtual full-time if their families had a choice. That sounds very similar to what we are doing. I think it's important that the community realize what, that when the president and the governor are talking about in-person school, the people there, they're talking about communities that are still in remote learning for the majority of their students. Boston, Worcester, and I'm not going to throw, you know, comment on why those districts are still there. I am not dealing with their parameters. They are not talking about Norwood. Okay. Norwood is in a hybrid. It is in a, we looked at the, uh, in-person, full in-person model. Uh, originally when we looked at that, when you read through after the first paragraph, after the headlines, uh, when you talk, the CDC came out saying, was it three days ago that the, uh, that teachers could go back without being, um, vaccinated. If you read the next paragraph, it was six feet, wearing masks, washing hands, social distancing, um, small classes. Okay. It is exactly the things that Norwood has been doing since the beginning. So these are conversations about districts that are not doing what we are doing. So I need to be clear on that. So when we look at where we're at, so where we are at is that we are at a six-foot distance between students sitting in classrooms and in hallways and whatever. That is the original CDC requirement. That is what we agreed to, uh, with the teachers' union. We are also still, uh, dealing with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education came out with a whole bunch of guidelines around transportation, around buildings and maintenance and ventilation. Those guidelines have not changed at this point in time. We are told that we are going to get revised guidelines. There is no timeline for that. They have not told us when. Uh, when we, so we look at bus capacity, we can only put twenty-four students on a bus. Normally buses, our buses carry seventy students. We can only transfer twenty-four at a time. Okay. I, I will bring up, uh, Hanover. Hanover decided to go back to four days a week. They did not change transportation. So the students were coming in four days a week. But the, um, but they're only transporting the kids two out of those four days. Okay. Because those requirements, those guidelines have not changed. Um, in regards to distancing, there are some buildings in some communities that are larger than ours or not as cramped as ours. Maybe they have extra classrooms in their elementary schools, which we do not. We have art in the hallways in some of our buildings. So being able to use other spaces is problematic in Norwood, especially at the elementary level. Ventilation. The Cochlea Middle School, a, a third of that school because of the interior classrooms and the ventilation system being old, one of the reasons why we need to build a new middle school, we are not able to use those rooms. That is a space constraint that we will have that is probably not going to go away. I will also remind people out there that the Center for Disease Control defines a close contact as being within six feet for fifteen minutes or more for, within twenty-four, uh, sorry, forty-eight hours. Currently, the way we have structured our week because of the, of people being maybe coming down with the virus when they're not in school, our close contacts are down. If we go less than six feet, you are going to see a lot more um, quarantining going on, a lot more disruption where large segments, segments of classrooms would need to be quarantined. Uh, masks and medication strategies, those have not changed. Those are still central to everything. They just, uh, said today that wearing two masks is better than one. So I, I do want to take a little bit of time and talk about what Norwood is doing well. So we did a, a, a student learning time survey and actually have to, have to do another one by Friday afternoon about live synchronous, so a live teacher working with students in real time. And, uh, you know, and asynchronous or kids doing work, uh, you know, by themselves and that sort of thing. So when we put in our time, because we, when we originally designed our instructional model, we wanted it to be as close to school hours and live instruction with teachers as possible. We were very lucky in that the, uh, teachers' union joined us in that effort. So right now, uh, for, and it was, it's a two-week rotation because the original suggestion from the department was to do a week on, week off with our hybrid model. We decided that a week between, especially for elementary kids was too long. But our time requirements of the high school is fifty-six hours of live in-person synchronous instruction and fifty hours at the elementary level. The state requires thirty-five hours over that two-week period. We are almost dou- doubling the live learning time. A lot of the changes that you are hearing about in other communities are because they did not need live synchronous instruction. Cause the state required those changes to happen by the nineteenth. We have a strong technological backbone. I mean, everything from, uh, increased, uh, tools, increased technology, new Chromebooks. Our technology department has been second to none. Constantly solving problems, finding new ways to do things, um, and making it as easy as possible. And, you know, even going out and making sure that everybody had, uh, internet access. Um, Joe Kidd and his staff started doing that in April of last year. So we did not have, uh, the issues of people not having internet. So between Joe Kidd, working with the town manager's office to get internet and low-cost internet into all of our families' homes, uh, was a huge push. And, and we're having all of our kids being able to use the technology. Um, so we have a hybrid format, who, so even where we're hybrid, even when kids are at home, they are receiving live in-person instruction for at least part of the day on Wednesdays. Their asynchronous are doing projects for the other couple hours. Some kids will do that right after school. Some kids will do that at night. Uh, but the remote days retain time with a live teacher. That is not the case in other districts. Um, we have well-established mitigation strategies. We have, um, and we reopen quickly. We reopen quickly. So a lot of, a lot of places took a month or six weeks after school started to bring students in. Within two weeks, we had all of our students back in school for at least part in-person. So the challenges, um, you know, we So the challenges, um, you know, and you've heard me mention, uh, along with, uh, with Mrs. Reese, um, the disappointment in the educator vaccination schedule. Um, the town manager, myself, Mrs. Reese, Jill Driscoll, we're sitting together and designing and thinking about how we could get all of our educators vaccinated as soon as possible. That now is looking like it probably instead of the first week in February, like we had hoped, being the first week of March. We have new variants coming out. Uh, the latest report is that by the beginning of March, the UK variant will be the predominant um, form of COVID-19 in this country. Uh, it is increased in contagiousness. I think it's 50% more and is considered 30% more deadly. And we are starting to find out that it affects children, uh, more so than the older version. And here's the thing, if we have more infections, this is my science teacher piece, if we have more infections on RNA, which is what a virus is, is RNA, half a, short, half a strand, strand of DNA, basically. Um, very simple, just one set of, of genomes, not, not paired with something to mask it. It's very easy to have a, a variation in that genetic code causing changes. And the more replication, the more infection you have, the more chance you're going to have variants. So we need to get the numbers down, the cases down. Weather. In the fall, we used a lot of time outdoors. A lot of time outdoors, a lot of windows open. That is, there's a lack of outdoor time. Would be part of why the numbers have gone up. Space. So when the space in the, in the classrooms were designed, it's not just between desks. We also have to have a teacher space that is separate from the students and walkways and enough room to move around the room. We are not getting within that, uh, too close to other people. And I want to remind people that the childhood vaccine is still in the research phase and they're not looking at that possibly being out and, uh, being given to students probably until next fall. Uh, I've had people call me asking about using other buildings. That sounds like a great idea until you look at all of the logistics about school buildings. You have building security. You have, you need to have a nurse in every school building. Communication in about the school, if there's an emergency, there are requirements for that. Lunch, where are they going to eat lunch? How are you going to get lunch to them? Special area subjects, how are we going to have kids in these other outskirts buildings, have art, music and that sort of thing. Then there's supervision. How can a principal, you know, really effectively be in five or, you know, in several different small places at the same time and, and help manage those? So all of those are, are logistical pieces that make small buildings, uh, an issue. The other thing is, you know, people say, well, add more classrooms. We were lucky in that we had the support of the town, the town government, the town manager, the finance committee, the selectmen. Early on, we were able to move forward and hire teachers. We went to the well before most other places did. Because of that, we still have positions we have not been able to fill, where we've had people had to leave and we're having trouble fill them, but it's nothing like some of the other area, uh, other districts around. And part of the reason why they've gone to mostly asynchronous instruction is they didn't have the personnel to cover like we did. All right, so future work, um, we are obviously, so we are planning, we do not have a timeline. Because there are things we do not know yet. We are still waiting for guidance on transportation, still waiting on guidance on ventilation spaces and, and buildings. Um, once we have that, once we know what the new rules of the game are, we can really start looking at what are some of the things that can change that perhaps we can bring more students back? Vaccination of teachers is paramount to that happening. Um, and then after those things are in place and after we know, because one of the big questions are going to be, well, just because, you know, we have some guidelines here and we can bring more kids back, doesn't mean that every family is going to want that for their child. So we're going to need to figure out who wants to come back and how many we're really looking at putting into our classrooms and, and can we fit um, with these new pieces. And we, we still might not be able to solve the transportation problem because for the same reason we're short on teachers, there are not extra buses and extra bus drivers out there either. And then we're going to have to negotiate. We're going to have to sit that back down with the teachers' union and we're going to have to, once we know the new rules of the game, discuss it and negotiate that in order to be able to move forward. So a couple reminders, um, first, you know, we still have the, the travel ban requirement. People need to come back. They need to isolate. They need to test. Um, that is important. Uh, our numbers are down. Our numbers this week are down more than they were last week, which is a great sign. Uh, I'll be reporting out on that tomorrow. But the, um, I, I'm a little concerned with next week being vacation, uh, and people not distancing, people traveling, which really were the precursors for, you know, the holiday numbers and the increased numbers that we saw right after Thanksgiving and then right after the Christmas holiday. So if that continues, we could very well be back in the soup. And again, you know, that tho- those variants are, are in the US, that UK variant is, is becoming more prevalent. Um, and I'm a little concerned about that. Um, a, a, another reminder to reduce interactions to household members. Find socially distant ways to, to socialize and see people outside, maybe on a hike or something along that line. Uh, do a Zoom meeting, uh, play, play cards over the internet, something along that line. But, you know, try to keep to your household. Um, masks, wear your masks, wash your hands, those sorts of things. We need to keep these numbers going down. Um, for the reasons that I mentioned. Um, so that's kind of where we are. Let me, uh, escape from that. And then I will join you on, on that tab. So there's a lot of factors that need to come into play before, you know, people keep calling, when are we bringing kids back? When are we, what do? There's a lot of factors that come into being able to plan that. And you know, we had, we, we had hoped that we would be at the end of this month, having that, those plans and conversations, but the, the only thing that has changed since the beginning of January, from, from my point of view, is there's conversations about bringing kids back. But the teachers are not vaccinated. The rules have not changed. Our buildings have not gotten bigger. We have a vaccine. So there is a light at the end of tunnel, but I don't think people realize, I think people think that tunnel is shorter than it is. Um, there is nothing that, you know, and I know I speak for all the educators in the Norwood Public School system, there's nothing we would rather do than go back to the fall of 19 and do school like we did in October, November, December, and even January of 2020. There's nothing we would rather do. It is, it is painful. It is hard. Thirty-one years in education, I am constantly having conversations with people, having to, having to, to, to manage and, and, you know, with limited resources and not be able to provide what we've normally provided. Okay, schools do a lot more than just teach kids. A lot more. It is the, the social construct of what schools do is, in, is such a huge piece of our society and, you know, as educators, it's something that we, we want to do. But if you look at what Norwood has done, we have more live teaching. We are in the top 10% of live teaching in this state. We have designed cohorts, so we do not have outbreaks. With, this district has not closed a school because of the model that we've used. We have not flopped around because we designed a good model in the beginning, wrapped it up really quick and, and put it in place. You know, the, the break between days has kept our quarantining down, so the in-person is more consistent than you would see if we started packing kids into, into classrooms without being considerate of the risks. Another conversation I had with another parent who brought up that, you know, kids don't get this. Adults do. I am now on my fourth staff member that I am very concerned about their health, who has COVID-19. So as it, it is definitely about the kids, but it is also about the 550, 560 people who work for the Norwood Public Schools, provide what we do for our, for our kids. So I don't know if the school committee has, you know, you know, ca- could I come up with a timeline? Sure, I could come up with a timeline. I, I mean, I could come up with a timeline right now and then I can change it two days from now and I can change it a week from now. I don't think that's, that's, um, you know, I, I, you know, those that have worked closely, close to me, I don't make promises I can't keep. Um, but we need the Norwood Public Schools educators in the Commonwealth need these revised plans. We needed our teachers vaccinated. And from there, we can sit down with the teachers' union and start putting together a plan. And that's what we're waiting for. Do we, do we know how many buses we have? Yes. Do we know how many seats we have? Yes. Do we know how many desks we have in classrooms? Yes. So the groundwork is done, but the other work has got to be done so we can do the next step. And that's where the Norwood Public Schools are. I don't know if anyone in the committee has, uh, any questions, I can.
Now, Thompson, I, I, I fully hear everything that you're saying, um, and I know you're not ready to give like a timeline and I understand why. Um, but I know there's a lot of people in the community who really wish we could. Um, so I think it's safe to say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we are not looking at bringing more students back through March for all the reasons you identified.
I, 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 I'm hoping that by the beginning of March, we're starting to vaccinate the staff. So keep in mind that depending on what vaccine you're giving out, you have a first shot. You're waiting three or four weeks. You have a second shot and you're waiting three more weeks. So we're talking, you know, and, and then he, and here's the problem, and I'm a little, and again, i- i- it's not anybody in the room, it's just a general aggravation, okay? So the way it is set up right now is we are going to dribble and grab our teachers through sites to have them vaccinated. Okay, a more appropriate way to do this would be to, and maybe somebody's listening, but you send, you send the doses to the local health department or the local hospital or the local, local something. And though, and you schedule those teachers in that town to go get their shots. Because then you have a timeline you can work on. If I've got five and six going on different days, I don't know when I'm going to have a, you know, a critical mass of vaccinated people. And again, back to that, that piece and the incredible support that we get from the town manager's office, that we get from the health department, um, our nurses. Okay, we had, we were designing a plan based on the health department effectively, um, vaccinating all of their, um, all the first responders to be able to do that in two or three days in Norwood. So we would all be on the same schedule. So, you, I mean, we're looking at from when we start, probably a, a month and a half, two months before we're at that vaccination stage. Doesn't mean we can't do other planning in between, but that's going to be more difficult based on, and, you know, another, you know, another lost opportunity. Next week is school vacation. Theoretically, we're not all flying to the Caribbean this, this February, unfortunately. Right now I'm shivering, so I could use the Caribbean. But, um, that would be a great opportunity to have teachers go and get vaccinated. But it won't be their turn yet. So.
But, but just to help people who are asking, are writing, are calling, um, to understand that we're not bringing any more students back than we currently have back in our current model, at least through March, for the reasons that you identified.
I, my, my estimate would, would be that at this point in time. We have brought more of our most needy students back since, um, since December.
Right.
So we have brought more of those back, but these are, these are children who are in a substantially separate program. Our first-time English language learners. Significant needs, not, uh, inclusion kids. Uh, so there are other things that we can do. We've, we've brought other, other strategies into the mix. I would invite people to, to call the principals. We've had those discussions. But you know, it's, i- i- and again, having, having the rationed resources you're used to having for kids is, 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 are very difficult conversations. Very difficult conversations.
Are there other questions or comments from the committee at this time on this topic? Dave?
No, I just want to say that I think there's a, just, I thank you for the explanation. This bit of disconnect, I think that, you know, um, there are a lot of schools nationally, they're just completely remote. We did go with the hybrid model. It was well-designed. I mean, I'm actually very impressed, you know, I was very much, uh, worried and concerned and often against this plan. But, um, you know, it's actually worked out much better than expected. Not perfect, of course, nothing is. So I think that we are far ahead of, um, what other districts and other towns have done. So, you know, we are doing what we can with what we have and, um, you know, hats off to everyone on the administration team. Uh, good job. You know, I just, uh, I want people in the community to understand that, you know, we are, we are not what the whole country is talking about going back to school. We are back to school. You know, just, uh, not full-time and nobody else is. Nobody's full-time. And that's not going to happen until we get our teachers vaccinated. So, uh, call your local senator, call the governor. We would like our teachers vaccinated so our kids can go back to school in person. That's what it's about, you know, but it's just the whole rollout plan, I'm frustrated, we're all frustrated, but there is a hope. Um, and we just have to stay the course for now.
Yeah, and, you know, and to, to be fair, everybody's frustrated. I mean, everybody's, everybody is sick of it. Um, me too. I mean, I, 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 I totally get that. But, you know, the, the, the conversation, you, you gotta get to paragraph three and then look at where we are. And they're basically talking about what we're doing. Other, other districts have more space and larger buildings and, and they're able to do things we are not. Um, they don't have a middle school where we can't use a third of the rooms. Um, so these are all factors that that play into this. So you, I mean, you can't compare one district to the other because there's, there's constructs in there and every district has, has negotiated its own agreement with its own union. Which is something that the superintendent's asked. That either, either the department or the governor's office would take a lead on that, so.
Yeah.
Dave, I, I understand that. I think what would be helpful is that you, there's a lot of expert knowledge that you have in your head about what the facilities look like, what all of the facilities look like, the stress and the burden, um, on the system as a whole, that is not well-known to the community. So I do think that it would be very helpful if what, I'm not asking for a specific plan. I think there's two ways to approach this and I'll lay them both out. So the first way would be to say, um, you know, this is what it would look like if we brought folks back, like post-teacher vac, assuming post-teacher vaccination. This is what it would, this is how long it would take us to get back to, um, K through, let's, let's say K through six or just K and then the elementary levels, um, with students at three feet. This is what it would look like. We would need to have X number of people in the RLA, right? Because this is how many people we could handle. I think, so that's one way to do it, is to lay out the plan, a very general plan that way to show what it would look like. I think the other way to do it is to say, here's why we can't bring the students back. Because in the elementary schools, we have this much space. In the middle schools, we have this much space. I think the problem is that you know this information so well, but it's hard for folks who don't know the system as intricately as you do to understand what the constraints are as well. Um, so I think that that would be helpful information to share out to the community to help, because people are calling and emailing because they, they want to understand. They want to know what's going on. Um, and this might be a way to help, you know, people be able to kind of self-service themselves in terms of the information. I'm sure there's a number of people that if you said, yeah, we can come back, but we can go back full-time, but it means only 50% of our students are going to fit in a classroom and the other 50% have to go RLA. The, as a parent, you might go, oh, okay, wow, that seems ridiculous. Or it means that students are going to be sitting desk to desk. Right? Yeah, we can bring the kindergartners back full-time, but that means there, your kindergartner is going to be in those small group circles breathing all over each other five days a week from nine to two, right? Like, and like, it's, you know, so like, if you can give, if you can anchor some of, some of that into kind of like the concrete realities of, of each grade level, I think that might help the community understand.
Yeah, I don't, uh, well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I don't know if we can actually do it at the Yeah, I don't, uh, well, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if we can actually do it at the middle school because of the room problem, and I don't think we can do it at the high school because of those, and this is my thing with the MSBA, is they have such constraints on how big rooms can be. Those are not big rooms. Um, so we can probably up that a little bit at the high school, but we wouldn't be able to bring everybody back. Um, those kids a little older, blah, 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 we might have to, we might have to prioritize with the high school. We might be somewhat limited at the middle school, but if we could get teachers vaccinated and get closer to three or four feet, then we probably could, could do seventy percent based on, on the initial look that we did, uh, prior to, um, you know, right after, right after Christmas, right around the Christmas break. So, um, you know, and then the, you know, the question is, do you do four days? Probably, probably would do four days and keep, and keep the Wednesday as it is, just because of the difficulty. But then after, so there's the and it doesn't mean I can drive them there. You know, so there's, so there's that piece, I mean, so.
So I, I think that's what, that's what we're looking for, is that, is that you're, is, is when we ask the question of you, you have all the reasons. And I, but I think it would be helpful if we could somehow get that posted up online somewhere, so that people could could kind of, we could direct people to that, so that you don't keep getting the same questions over and over again. Um, instead, we can help kind of amplify that message about the fact that, yeah, right, we've got thirteen buses, so if we bring seventy, we know, and I, and I think we can get seventy percent of the students back, or if you're a middle schooler, like, sorry, it probably can't happen. But like, so if we have some of those parameters laid out in a PowerPoint, we can help amplify that message, so that the community can understand, and the community can have conversations about, we can start, we can have conversations about those constraints. And then we can start saying things like, here's why Walpole is doing it, or here's why Westwood is doing it, because in their space configuration, they can fit ninety-five percent of their students back at four feet. Our space configuration only allows us to bring fifty percent of our students back at two and a half feet. Right? Like, it just makes it a little bit easier if that stuff is in a PowerPoint that I can bring to, that I can email to somebody, or that I can post up, or that I can talk with about it.
I, I, I agree, Dave, and I was just piggybacking on what Joan is saying, that at the elementary level, I know this is a lot of work, but I think it's really important that you break it down by school, because you know, we know as the committee, um, that the five schools are very different in the space offerings, and could we maybe bring more kids back in some schools? Yes, but all schools, no. And there's an equity piece in that, that the school committee and the, the administrative team would have to seriously consider. So I, I do agree with what Joan is asking for.
Yeah.
Any other feedback at this time from the committee? Okay, Dr. Thompson, do you have anything else under your report this evening?
Uh, I do not. The other thing is, uh, for under new business, so.
Uh, so moving along to budget, Ms. Sheridan, there's some budget transfers.
Um, I have one budget transfer that has to be approved by the school committee. Um, it is under the threshold of twenty-five thousand, but, uh, because it crosses DSC function codes, it has to be approved by the school committee. Um, it's requested by Donna Brown, the principal at Callahan. Uh, the reason for the budget transfer is per school improvement plan, they're purchasing multicultural test texts for student usage, and they also want to purchase some, but foundation kits um, for the reading specialists. Uh, she wants to transfer five thousand, six hundred dollars from her equipment rep and rep at the Callahan. Uh, she does have that amount of money in there, her current balance is seven thousand, six eleven, and she's gonna be transferring it to her Callahan textbooks account. Uh, that's the only budget transfer that I have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Thank you, Myaf, is there a second? Am I right? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Great, thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Awesome, moving along, um, Myaf, could you give us the budget subcommittee update and the BBC update, please?
Sure, so, um, the, but the townwide budget balancing committee met on Tuesday, February second. Um, at that meeting, the, uh, budget balancing committee voted in favor of our proposal from, um, Mr. Mazuko and Mr. Rickquade to, um, to the, go ahead and increase our budgets by three and a half percent, um, but that will require potentially, um, two point five million dollars in free cash to support the operating budget for FY twenty-two. Everyone knows that, of course, that is um, not what we would be hoping to do, uh, you know, as part of the override, the plan was that we would stop using free cash to, um, supplement the operating budget. However, these also are extraordinary times during this global pandemic, um. As you know, we were one of the, um, many districts in, um, the Commonwealth that saw a decrease in, um, our number of students enough that we fell into, like, if they did the formula, they would have, actually, our chapter seventy money would have gone down a little bit. And so we got put in the, they called the whole harmless category, and we got the minimum increase in state aid, which is only thirty dollars per student. So, um, we are not, our chapter seventy, um, or our state aid overall was gonna go, is projected at this point to go up by about one percent. So, um, that's a very unusual situation that we think is largely due to COVID, and we also think that that could change. As everyone knows, this was just based on the governor's budget, then there'll be the House budget, and then the Senate budget. So, um, we're hopeful that it's possible that state aid may go up a little bit. The other reason why, um, having a three and a half percent budget increase would require the infusion of free cash is because at this point, the health insurance estimate, the GIC, is estimated at about five percent. We are hoping that that number won't come in that high. So, um, what Mr. Mazuko's proposal was, was that we assume that because there is a fair amount of free cash available this year, that we would, if necessary, put in two and a half million dollars in free cash to support the budget um, as a town, and then if the state aid numbers go up and the GIC comes down, or, um, you know, other things, we get a, you know, our debt service number comes down a little bit because we get, um, favorable bond rate, bond, um, interest rates, that we could whittle down that amount of free cash. So the idea is to just go ahead and set our three and a half percent threshold, have that be the target for our budget, and not do what had been done typically in years past, um, was to kind of start with one projection and then keep changing our target number as we started to finalize, to get a better sense of what the budget is. So the idea is, um, to just start with a high number of free cash and then hopefully trim that down as low as we can get before town meeting. Um, it should be noted that even though this, um, budget would require the infusion of free cash, it actually still is putting money into the stabilization account, including the override stabilization account. This is year three of the override budgets, and, um, at this point, the original projections called for no contribution to the override stabilization account this year, but instead, um, the proposal would be to put seven hundred thousand dollars into the override stabilization account. So we still think that even with this unusual year and, um, the difficulties that we're facing, um, due to, uh, you know, a less than great increase in state aid, and the other places that we're seeing things are certainly our meals and hotel taxes are, um, are, those receipts are not going up as much as we had expected them to when we were originally doing our projections. But we still think that we're in, um, a good position to, um, make this override last for at least five years. So, um, I thought that that was good news, and the, the budget balancing committee did agree, um, unit, vote unanimously to support that proposal. Um, we did schedule another budget balancing meeting for March second at five thirty PM, so, um, we'll see, hopefully we'll get a little bit more information about maybe GIC by then. Um, there might be some other information available then. Um, the other thing is, the budget subcommittee of the school committee met yesterday. Um, the budget process is ongoing, we had several conversations, um, with, uh, Lori Semino and with Karen Sheridan about, um, budget requests and things like that, and the subcommittee will be meeting again, um, a week from today, Wednesday, the seventeenth, at, um, ten AM, and at that time, we hope to be looking at a very rough first pass at the budget, so that, um, we can do a little bit of reviewing and asking some questions before that, um, budget goes in your packet, because the, it will be coming to the school committee two weeks from today.
Thank you, Myaf. Uh, any questions from the committee on anything budget-related at this time? Ms. Sheridan?
I have just one question on the budget. Is, are you, I'm wanting it to be just electronic this year, or do you want, uh, a paper copy?
Well, would members of the committee like?
Uh, electronic is fine with me.
Electronic's fine, save some trees.
Everybody okay with the electronic?
If anybody would like a paper, they can email me and I can do a paper.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, anything else budget-related, Myaf?
Actually, I, I, I'm actually concerned, because Myaf has this huge collection of volumes of budgets. Not gonna have that, this could ruin, this could ruin the streak.
But then, when we finally meet in person again, she doesn't have to bring all those binders with her, so. Which I'm also guilty of bringing binders, I'm not making fun of you. We both come in the meetings with our binders.
If I had, if, if I had, you know, FY seventeen electronically, I would be thrilled. So the only thing I've got is that giant binder.
All right, well, well, then we're gonna lighten your load going forward, that's all.
Great, thank you. Um, so, moving on to old business, uh, Dr. Thompson, we did want to talk about your superintendent goals, um, as a benchmark report.
Okay, do you want me to, um, just bring up that document? Would that be easier for everybody?
I think so, then we can all reference it and see the highlighted areas that we wanted to discuss.
Okay. Too many tabs open, so this takes forever, and then they're not in the same order as they are on my thing. Why is it not showing up? Oh, here it is. It started with draft instead of school. All right. All right, let me know when you can, uh.
It's open.
All right, good. Is it big enough? Can you make it bigger?
Uh, maybe make it slightly bigger.
How's that looking?
Yeah, and we were supposed to discuss this at the last meeting, which is why it said draft for January twenty-seventh, but we ran out of time, so it got bumped to tonight.
Yep, okay, so, uh, so, uh, so I'll just update where we are with the yellow sections, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so what we had said that we would do is a, a benchmark report, it's supposed to be in January, so now it's tonight, um, just to see where you are in your goals. Um, and I believe, Dr. Thompson, when you and I reviewed this, um, the other week, they highlighted areas, were areas where, um, possibly we needed to adjust the timeline, um, and/or add things in, or you just wanted to provide an update to the committee.
Yeah, so what, let's, so let's look at the, uh, this first one, the goals, um, which is about student learning. So, uh, we have identified and implemented technology tools, uh, thank you, Joe Kidd and the technology department, um, creating a facility, facilitating teacher PD that started quickly and immediately in September, uh, and carries through to this day. Uh, we have an integration specialist who's been tremendous in that effort. Um, I'm too tired, I can't, I can't, uh, more, uh, Laura Mullen. Um, the, so those pieces are in, I will have, uh, detailed accounting for you when we come back together in March to, to do an update progress report. Uh, the portion of the graduate rubric, we have, we have rough drafts of those. Um, they're going to be completed after the vacation period. Um, the timeline for that, this, I think, is a little, what was a little more aggressive. Uh, the high school is going to have those ready for the NIASC accreditation in the spring, so that's, um, so I will have at least one or two uh, drafts that they are going to, um, use, um, and try out over the next few weeks. So completing might not be the, uh, the right term on that one. Um, as far as, um, the three-tiered, um, and that, this is, it's actually the, the, the tiered approach for general ed to make sure that, um, we need to, we need to work a little bit on the, on the wording, um, of that, but it should be, uh, the tiered approach for interventions before they go to special ed. Um, so currently, right now, we're looking at this, um, you know, adjusting specialized programs, budgeting, uh, planning for Wilson recent, reading, which is one of the, um, key interventions we're looking at around reading. Um, we just wrote, uh, a grant, uh, to help support that in our special education grant. Um, we're gonna be training teachers in June, um, with that, and piloting, um, co-teaching at the, um, Oldham next year. Um, so that's, um, the piece on that, um.
Dr. Thompson, could I ask, is the NIASC visits in March, or was that moved?
I think that, I wanna say May.
Right, okay.
A little bit, I think it's a little bit later. I did send out an invite. I could try to go back to my calendar to see.
Yeah, I still have it for March, I wasn't sure if it.
Yeah, then it's, then it's March.
Okay.
Um, so, so. Um, oh, that's what. Uh, I wanna say it's the end of March, but, oops. Uh, no, it's the second week of March, the seventh through the tenth, so I should add that for you. Uh, at least that first rubric that they're gonna be using as their, uh, their, um, exemplar, uh, probably right after, uh, vacation, end of that, this week of March.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, and then, uh, going down to, uh, student learning, professional learning time. So we, uh, have worked on a schedule for professional learning time. Obviously, we have our Wednesday half-days, uh, as well as our faculty meetings. We did do, um, work with our leadership team and our department chairs and our lead teachers on running, um, a professional learning community, which is a certain approach to, um, talking about data and creating professional time. Uh, that has been established. The next pieces are going to be bringing that into a, a consistent practice in all of our schools, but that groundwork, um, has been done and that training has been completed. And there is scheduled time this year, and as I told our, our leadership team, this is a great opportunity, you know, out of great crisis comes great opportunity, right? Um, so we had the opportunity, because of the time we've built in the schedule, to make sure we're on the same page um, with our kids on Wednesdays, as well as our faculty meetings, to really spend some time making sure that is uh, time well-spent, and, uh, build the, uh, build the construct for these kinds of professional conversations. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions on that one.
I don't see any, Dr. Thompson.
Right, I, I, I have asked, um, the leadership team to kind of put together a schedule of, of how they've used that time, so I'll be able to share that with you, uh, in more detail in March. Okay, so this, under professional practice with the Norwood School, listen, uh, is one that we are behind on. Um, I think that should the committee, uh, adopt my recommendation for the audit, we will get back on track on. Uh, so Dr. Wyeth, uh, has led, and we've had the task force with Hugh and, uh, and Margot, looking at, um, how to go about this, and we basically came back around to looking at doing an equity audit. Um, so we have done that, we have met with groups, we have a, a group that we think is gonna be very comprehensive, um, and fairly cost-effective, and will get us quickly into the place we need to be, um, you know, to make the changes that, that are necessary. First, figure out what they are, uh, and then plan to do them. But this is, um, one where, you know, we have not gotten to the survey, or, or parents, or any of that, but we are looking at repositioning ourselves moving forward to be able to have that done, um, definitely by next February, the whole, the whole, actually probably speed that, the eve of the first and the second, um, process up on that, so. Any, any questions on on that one?
I don't see any.
Okay, um, yeah, and, you know, and keep in mind, I can't, I can't see the documents. Okay. Yeah, you know, and keep in mind, I can't I can't see the documents, see you guys at the same time. I keep talking about that. So then then the next one, the improvement goals between December and January. Complete the education plan. Complete might not be the complete the first draft of the educational plan. And then we're going to give a presentation, school committee, on grade configurations, pros and cons. We've talked about that in passing. Maybe that's something that we can schedule for the March meeting. We have talked about it. It hasn't been a separate presentation at this point. But if anyone has any questions on those.
I think this one in particular, we we didn't know what we know now with the process when we drafted these goals. Like, we had a high level overview. I think going off of all the information we have now from AI three, diving more into the pros, cons of the grade configuration is more April. And that's what I currently have on the long term agenda, because again, for February and early March, the goal is more just submitting that ed plan and definitely asking questions about the grades, but not really starting to weigh the pros and cons. So we we should, if the committee agrees, edit that to reflect the current timeline of the project. Are there any questions on on this area, Maia?
I guess I just have a question in general. I don't disagree with you that we should adjust for, you know, what we are understanding better about the MSBA process, but I I'm just wondering, in general, Dr. Thompson, do you have a specific proposal for us of what reasonable timelines you think would be for all of the rest of these goals? And, you know, can we get sort of a similar to what we get for strategy, you know, like, okay, which ones are we on track for? Which ones are we behind on? Like a color dashboard or something like this. I think it's nine thirty. We've been meeting six since then. It's three and a half hours in just staring at my iPad and I don't feel that it's necessarily helpful for us to be going through this line by line. What I'm looking for is you to tell us. I'm on track for these. I'm behind on these. I have a plan to recover, or I need to adjust the dates. Tell us what you want, and then we can discuss.
Right. Well, I think the big one that we need to we need to adjust is, you know, is the Norwood Listens one. This one, we're not too far off on. Let me go down to the the next one. The strategic plan, we're a little off on and you know, the reason, well, people in the room who know the reason, it it, you know. Again, everything is a little more difficult in in the medium that that we're using and it takes more time. But we do have the on strategy up after vacation. I have asked that everybody be up to date with the entries, so we should be on track with that. But that is probably when we need to adjust, at least and schedule the reporting out for. Work has been done, but it's not necessarily into the platform on that one. Then I think that I think that's it. Those are the only two that I'm really concerned about at this point. It it's, you know, and it's just one of those. You know, and, you know, I I kind of honestly feel it's it's better that this is a two year cycle because this year is such a slog, trying to get some of these things done. You get pulled away from different things and things take longer than they should. But that's the only other one that I would recommend we look at the timeline for.
So the way that the current evaluation cycle that we agreed on is that there was the mid-cycle check-in in March, which currently on the long term agenda is scheduled for March twenty fourth. So, Maia, with what you were asking for and and the rest of the committee, are you looking for that as part of the mid-cycle check-in? Are you asking for it sooner?
Honestly, I was kind of expecting it tonight so that we could have agreed to a new timeline before we did the mid-cycle check-in. But if we if that can't happen, then, you know, okay, we do it as part of the mid-cycle check-in, but I I know we also have a lot of things on our agenda for March.
We do. And we're gonna talk about the long term agenda in a moment, but you 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 are correct. The next like four meetings are are very, very heavy between middle school commitments and budget and at the end of March, this mid-cycle check-in. Are there other questions or feedback on this benchmark report for Dr. Thompson goals? Dr. Thompson, is it feasible for the next meeting to have more of a, as as Maia was asking, like that proposal of this is what I'm behind on. This is how we should adjust it?
Hmm. Yep.
Okay. Anything else from Dr. Thompson or anybody on this topic? All right. So we'll move along to other items on the agenda. So we already talked about the middle school fight a lot. Dr. Thompson, is there anything in addition to the middle school project that you wanted to update the committee on?
No, I mean, it is. It is a process. I think we're in the in the whittling down stage. There are some spaced overages that we still need to talk about and make some decisions about. But we will be back at that soon, so.
If I could just ask the committee, the space summary that was talked about at the middle school building committee on Monday and is in your packet. It's a pretty significant document. It's a little confusing. I'm not who have a working group meeting next Tuesday with AI three and Compass. So if you have time to look that over and or watch the recording of Monday's middle school building committee meeting, and if you have questions, let Dr. Thompson and I know before Tuesday, so we can address them with AI three and Compass. I think that would be helpful in keeping the project moving. And then just to let the the community know, there is a website dedicated to the middle school project, if you weren't aware already. It's newcmsproject.org. And if you go to that website, it really brings you back to twenty seventeen with the long range feasibility study. You can see the statement of interest from two thousand eighteen that was submitted for this project. You can see the minutes from the town meeting in two thousand nineteen that approved the feasibility study. I'm seeing, you know, in different social media forums, people asking like, wait, why are we doing this? How did we get here? And all that information is on the website, as well as what are next steps. The middle school building committee meetings are recorded and are on that website as well for people to watch, and all the documents that are shared from that meeting are there also. Okay, so moving along. The joint facilities MOU update. And Maia, could you guide us through this MOU?
Sure. As you will remember, we had approved an MOU that we signed with the Board of Selectmen. When we started the process of having a joint facilities department. Anne Marie Missola and I met with some representatives from the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Mizuko, Mr. Riccardi, Dr. Thompson, of course. And we discussed some updates to this MOU. It's mostly just for some things that are changing this year about budget, about staff moving from the Savage Center to out of the Savage Center. I'm having trouble opening this document. There we go. And there was one other thing that we're putting in here. It's all in that FY twenty number ten or two. So the administrative offices of the facilities department will move to two oh six Central Street with workshop space remaining at the Savage Center. The full cost of all utilities, repair work, associated facilities costs and personnel costs for all facilities and janitorial staff will be placed in a consolidated single facilities budget, and analysis of staffing needs versus contracted reservices will continue. The Board of Selectmen approved has approved this amendment to the MOU. And I would recommend that the school committee also approve this.
Thank you, Maia. Any questions from the committee on the MOU in our packet? Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. For this question? All in favor?
Hi.
Five zero. Great. And I do believe we each have to sign this. So, Dr. Thompson, if you could have Priscilla print it out and then let us know when we can stop by and sign it.
Okay.
Mr. Mizuko had said he could get the copy that the the Selectmen had signed, so we can sign that copy. So I think we might need might take it just a little while to get that processed.
All right. Thank you. I forgot he said that. Thanks, Maia. So anything further with the joint facilities or at this time everything is pretty wrapped up? Or I know we have to approve the budget for the joint facilities department, correct?
Right. So yeah, this MOU says that, you know, there will be a joint facilities budget for starting this year and when there is a budget that that would be approved by both, I believe, the Selectmen and the school committee. So we'll have to figure out exactly what the mechanism will be for when that will happen. But at this point, you know, when we met as a budget balancing committee, we had already talked about the fact that the facilities money was going to be taken out of the school budget, it was going to be taken out of the general government budget. There are still a few individual line items that move might move around a little bit. We're trying to figure out. You know, all of the custodian salaries are moving over, but you know, some of the supplies, like what's a janitorial supply and what's just a regular school supply or, you know, like telephones count as technology or do they count as utilities? Like, there's a few things that are still being worked out with town hall. But so but I don't think that that needs to come to the school committee. I think that really just more an administrative matter to make sure that we anything we're taking out of our budget is getting put into the the facilities budget. And then, of course, general government's going through that same exercise.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody on joint facilities? All right. Moving right along to the next item under old business is the long term agenda. So the long term agenda is linked on the agenda. I sent it out to all of you the other week. Didn't get any feedback, so once again, just asking for feedback. I welcome people's input on the agenda. I don't need to be the only person working on it. But we do have quite a lot to talk about in end of February throughout March. As I said earlier, the budget process that Maia mentioned, you know, really starts at our next meeting. Lots of middle school building decisions on our plate. We did add as the middle school building committee, the second public forum about the middle school on Thursday, March eighteenth. And we are going to cross post that again as a school committee meeting. So if you can please attend that, that would be great. And then also, as a reminder, our budget hearing is currently scheduled for March thirty first. And also on March thirty first, Dr. Thompson and I just found out is also going to be Student Government Day, which we will be doing virtually this year. So that has been added. But currently, the long term agenda has perspective agenda items on through June, because we have meetings scheduled through June. At the end of the agenda, I have the parking lot for the rest of this year, the topics that we eventually need to get on, as well as a parking lot of topics started for next year as well. Did anybody have any questions or feedback on anything you see on our agenda so far? Okay, well, we are. Yeah, John.
I I I want to go back to when we were all still in person, which seems like such a long time ago, and we had the retreat. It wasn't a retreat. We had the workshop with Dorothy Presser from Masq. We identified a few kind of priority topics that we wanted to get done for this year. Obviously, I think that that list is thrown out the window because we did not anticipate a pandemic. But I think the strategy of selecting a few things moving forward is a good one. And I think maybe we should all take a look, both at the long term agenda for the end of this year, but then also setting it for what we're working on for over the summer and through the fall, and really try to whittle that down to super high priority items. Because as Maia said and I just demonstrated, we've been sitting in front of our computers after a long day of work, sitting in front of your computer on Zoom meetings, and we've now been in session for three hours and forty seven minutes, and we're just we're just not doing our best. So I'd just like to make a plea that we all kind of look at that long term agenda, think about what some priorities are, and if we do end up scheduling another school committee meeting to discuss the middle school building plan, I'd like to add that to the agenda as well and have us all come prepared to kind of hash that piece out right then and there so that we can stay focused on agreed upon priorities.
Yeah, absolutely. And I do have to talk, Dave and I have a one on one, Dr. Thompson and I have a one on one tomorrow. I was gonna talk to him more about adding a date, and we also have to check in with AI three and and Compass to see if they're available, because they really need to be part of the next conversations around the middle school. Just as a reminder, we do have the school committee goals that we voted on that are on our website. I can send that link out again, so I don't pull this stuff from thin air. Every time I work on the agenda, what I'm doing is I'm looking at our goals, Dr. Thompson's goals, the strategic plan, and the school improvement plans. And making sure that everything we said across all those documents is reflected and brought to the school committee at the appropriate time.
Yep. And I think we need to have a meeting where we are. I mean, I don't love having meetings, but I think we need to spend some time talking about the fact that there's three different documents. There's almost more documents telling us what to do than there are our school committee members. And so we need to kind of whittle that down a little bit and 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 make some hard choices. So yeah, that's all I'm gonna say. And I think we should also be talking about, quite frankly, so apparently I'm gonna go off script here, but you talked about long term agenda and that's quasi relates to meetings. But I do also think that we need to sit down and 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 talk about what exactly it is that we want from folks who are doing the presenting. What would be most helpful for us so that our meetings can go as efficiently as possible? And that's not that's not putting, I I'm trying not to say, Teresa, do this. I'm trying to say as a committee, we as a whole need to come up with a consensus for what that is.
Yeah, we do. We do have the presentation template that we put together before, excuse me, that I believe Lori used tonight with with Ryan and Aubrey. But probably a reminder, Dr. Thompson, if you could send that out to all the administrators again, especially in May, when people start to come forth with handbooks and student school improvement plans. We did create, you know, this is what we want to see. This is how we want those presentations to be formed. But I agree, there's probably some additional work we could do there. So agenda is something we are allowed to talk about offline. So if you look over this document and you have feedback, email me or call me, and we'll make further edits. But I can't promise that anything is being changed throughout March. I think we're unfortunately pretty wetted to the items that are on our agenda at least through March. So next up is policy. We do have to take a second vote on the classroom observation policy. As a reminder, Ms. Amino brought it forward to our class meeting. It's a new policy to the district. We took our first vote. It's been on our website. I don't believe we received any feedback from the community. Have we, Dr. Thompson?
No, we have not.
So is there a motion to approve it for the second time tonight?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Thank you, John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
All right, great. So there's one new business item, Dr. Thompson, the equity proposal that you wanted us to consider?
Yes. So the equity proposal was handed out. So the equity task force has been looking to find a way to to get, you know, an audit of where we are, engage stakeholders. And then ultimately, you would like to use that information to plan to improve going forward. So we talked to two different vendors, had meetings with with them. Mass Insight came highly recommended from a neighboring district who used them recently. I have worked with them with with advanced placement expansion and another district before that, another thing that they do, but they have all the tools and the people to do the work. We are in a situation because of hiring some people late that we have money in that account that we could use to cover this. This probably is the the hard reality is we just don't have the capacity in-house to 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 do this. These are people who do this as part of their work. They have a well-oiled machine. They would do the surveying and focus groups between now and probably June. We would then reengage them in the fall, looking at that down. uh between now and probably June, uh we would then reengage them in the fall, looking at that data and developing a plan to go forward, it's pretty much outlined uh in that document that I shared with you. Um it is eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the whole thing, but when you look at the amount of work and the amount of time that's involved with that, especially the strategic planning piece on how you're going to use that data to to cause improvement, um that actually is kind of on the lower side of some of the other people who are out there, so I don't know if the committee has um questions, Dr. Wyatt is here, he's been intimately involved with getting the quote and the proposal. Um but it it's my recommendation that, you know, we take this opportunity so that we can accomplish one of, one of these goals.
Dave, Katania?
Um so I think it's incredibly important and really necessary, I just missed it, where was this coming from and what part of the budget? We have.
This uh this would come from our, from our personnel money that we did not spend, when we, when we started hiring teachers, we put a budget for uh all year salaries, but some, several of them were hired weeks after we started, and again, just that process with the amount of hiring we were doing, so you collect that money together for twenty people, and it's enough money where we could do that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Dr. Wyatt, is there anything else that you wanted to add on from what Dr. Thompson shared?
Um, no, I think um, you know, hopefully, if you have any questions about any of the activities or phases of this work, I'm happy to sort of try to answer some of those questions or provide clarity. I, the one thing I think maybe we can do without, Dave, we haven't really talked about this yet, but it's the district vision setting, so if we're looking to cut a little bit out of this, we could probably cut that out, because we've kind of done that work, if you look at how they describe the district vision setting, that would be the first thing um that would precede, you know, um actually, the kickoff meeting, which they describe on page three. So, you know, we could, we could probably do without that piece, but the rest, I think, is is pretty essential, you know, the rest of the add-ons that they sort of uh list on page nine there. Um I think we do need the translation services, we probably definitely need the prioritizing of the findings, and then, you know, assistance with the strategic planning, um you know, we might even, yeah.
And just to be clear, it's not, it's not a new strategic plan, but it's a, it's a strategic plan about becoming equitable, so.
Right, right, yeah. And we just got some information about this SR twos grant, so I'm not, uh we we can explore whether this, that grant could cover some of these funds. That might be a possibility, Dave, I don't know what you think about that.
I would rather hang on to that money, because that that money we can use through twenty-three, and I'd rather be in a position where we're doing more interventions that going forward, we, we have the money in the general budget.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right, there'll be.
Joan, you?
I I do have a question, um we postponed and uh curriculum refresh update and utilized that money for um offsetting the costs that we incurred hiring remote teachers, setting up the RLA, the the newest unfunded mandate, um which is the RLA. Is there any, is there any way that we can be using some of this hiring spend-down money, should we be using this hiring spend-down money to be pre-purchasing some things so that we don't keep falling behind on the curriculum refresh?
Yes, yes. So that's.
Does that, does that impact this amount of money? No, okay.
No, no. There are, there are other things that have not, savings that will, will hopefully cover that, we're not quite there at that point, but that is also on the front, back burner.
Are there questions there, Thomas, from the is there a motion to approve um this proposal?
I'm, I'm having trouble hearing, if people aren't talking, if they could mute their microphone, I can't hear what you're saying, Teresa.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah, um I was just saying, is there, would anybody like to make a motion to accept this proposal so we can sign a contract with Mass Insight for the equity audit?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dave, is there a second?
I'll send.
Thank you, Maya, for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero, okay, great.
Okay, thank you, thank you, wanna try to uh seal that up and get that moving quickly so we can hit that June date, thank you very much.
Okay, wonderful, um so at this time, consent agenda, Dr. Thompson?
Yes, we have uh, we have one, um I gotta bring it up, sorry, one uh donation from Ohio Piles Prints rebate for sixty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents to the high school.
Is there a motion to approve that donation, or accept that donation? Thank you, Anne Marie, seconded by Joan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, great. So at this time, we have school committee agenda, uh Joan, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing this evening.
Uh Anne Marie?
That's right.
Maya?
Nothing tonight.
Dave, Katania?
No comments.
Um just very briefly, um we have not forgotten about the survey with the school start time work, um and the next survey will go out um around Friday of this week, um just so the community knows that that is coming. Uh but other than that, I don't have anything else this evening, uh we did have executive session before our open meeting, uh we were efficient in that meeting, so we do not have to go back into executive session. Uh so at this time, is there a motion to adjourn? Anne Marie, seconded by Joan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, wonderful, well, have a good night, everybody, and we will be back as a school committee on February twenty-fourth, I believe, right? Yes, February twenty-fourth, um so see you then.
All right, thank you.